Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order for the County Wakefield Board of Appeals meeting for March 24th, 2021. I'll start with a called order and roll call of attendees. Jim McBane.
Here.
Chip Tarbell. Chip.
I had them mute, sorry.
No worries, welcome. Amy Wall.
Yeah.
Joe Pride.
Yeah.
Tom Lucy.
Here.
Mike Feely.
Here.
And Greg McIntosh.
Here.
Great, thank you. We'll proceed to the legal notice, Amy, if you please.
Consistent with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and banning gatherings of more than 10 people, this meeting will be conducted by remote participation to the greatest extent possible. The public may not physically attend this meeting, but every effort will be made to allow the public to be in or listen to the meeting in real time. Persons who wish to do so are invited to click the following link. If you do not have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the following dial-in number, 1301-715-8592, meeting ID 88580195507, task code 470235. Please only use dial-in or a computer and not both, as audio feedback will distort the meeting. This meeting will be audio and video recorded. One, continued hearing. Two, 21-45, 21-46, Tagos Wolf, application for a determination and/or finding with respect to a continuation and extension of non-conforming uses under Article 9, Section 190-50 of the Wakefield zoning bylaw to allow an addition onto an existing dwelling. The application for a variance under Article 10, Section 190-66 of the requirements of Article 6 and Table 2 of the Wakefield zoning bylaw related to an addition to be constructed onto the existing dwelling, the property is shown as map 34, lot carso 45 of the assessors map and is located at 49 Houndson Ave., Board of Appeals.
Thank you, Amy.
Welcome.
Okay, our first continued hearing of the evening is case 21-29, 30 and 31, M. Bar Wakefield LLC at 500 Main Street.
May I, Mr. Chair?
Good evening, Brian.
Good evening. For the record, attorney Brian McRae representing the applicant M. Bar Wakefield LLC regarding property at 500 Main Street Wakefield, which, you know, has been divided into two lots and the subject of this hearing is one of the lots on the corner of Richardson Street. With me tonight is Bob Santinelli, the principal of M. Bar. Also Paul Finocchio, our surveyor, is here and is Tom Chiuanda here? I think he is.
He is.
Yes, he is, who is our architect on the project. We, we, over the past couple of weeks, have had some homework assignments that we've worked on. They've included working on the site plan, revising that with the town engineer, Bill Renaud. We've had, I think, three Zoom meetings with Bill and his associate, Eric Sherman, where we've gone over the plans in detail in conjunction with what was required by TAC and the town traffic consultant, how it relates to the envision program, the real to trail to make sure that everything was done or will be done in sync. We've reviewed, made revisions to, and we're going to go through that in some detail. We've made some revisions to the landscaping plan because Bill wanted us to shrink the sidewalk and push it out, which actually worked for the benefit because it gave us more green space on the corner. We submitted some revised building slash sign elevations and I've also provided some draft conditions for consideration of the board as you requested, which had been slightly revised pursuant to our meetings with Mr. Renaud to meet some of his requirements that he asked for, which I can, you know, when it's appropriate, go through those in detail and kind of point out some of the changes and additions compared to what was submitted for the record last Friday. So with that said, if I may, I'm going to bring up the latest and greatest site plan. Give this a shot. Hang on a second. Great. You guys see that? Yep. Great, so this is pursuant to our work with Bill Renaud, the town engineer and Eric. This is revised site plan revised as of 3/8/2021, consistent with what was submitted to you with some, some minor modifications. The first sheet is just the existing conditions plan, which hasn't changed at all from day one. This is a sheet now that we've inserted to just keep the record straight, which is the approval not required plan that has been endorsed by the planning board and in the event the board approves this project, we'll record this plan that will divide the lots. And as I've mentioned, the subject of this application is Lot 2, but there is going to be some parking on Lot 1 and it's going to be, as you know, some landscaping, temporary landscape requirements on Lot 1, which we'll get into because the landscaping plan that we submitted addresses that as a concern that has been raised by Mr. Tapell throughout the hearing process. Sheets, sheet three is the, is the site plan where there's been some changes on the sidewalk layout. One of the things that came out of traffic advisory was it's anticipated that there's going to envision there's going to be a median that's going to go in front of this property on Main Street. The, the town traffic consultant had a concern that, that even if that was not put in, that there could be an issue with people coming out of the bank parking lot and trying to take a left with traffic. So, and we were concerned with that too, because we're concerned it would back up the queuing in our lot for people that just want to get out. So Mr. Santinelli actually participated in the envisioned public process and asked a lot of questions. And what we found out is, is that there will be a break in the, in the medium at Amory Street, which is right here. So Bob is comfortable with right hand, right hand only out of the driveway, so we're going to post no, no left turn. That was a recommendation of the traffic advisory committee consultant. And that way we're not dealing with conflicting traffic turns here. And if people want to go back to the west side or to Greenwood, they can easily do it by coming out, taking a right and then going right down Amory Street and on your way back to Greenwood or to the west side, or they could go downtown like they would normally go anyways. So we're fine with that and that was a requirement of the TAC. So Paul, do you want to kind of pipe in for any other changes that, I think there were some utility changes and then I think most importantly, kind of what's happening with the sidewalk?
Yeah, basically after our conversations with the town engineer, the sidewalk on Main Street is proposed to be widened on an extra two feet. So we've shown that on our plan. The sidewalk on Richardson Street will be removed, that's, that's the portion that's on our site. It'll be relocated to the property line and the street layout line. And that sidewalk is proposed to be 10 feet wide with granite curbing. There will be some relocation of some existing structures, which is the catch basin that's located near the entranceway. That'll be converted over to a manhole and a catch basin will be installed in the street. And the same thing on Main Street, there's an existing catch basin that'll be converted to a manhole cover and then a new catch basin installed on Main Street as part of the DPW's work on that intersection of Main and Richardson Street. We'll be extending our curb line down to the existing opening, which is actually coming in on the Lot 1 side. That's what Brian said, we'll stop that and then the town will take over from there. Who's ever doing the work for the envision 2000 process. We've also spoke with the light department and relocating existing streetlight and the existing handhole, we'll be moving it from basically where it's located in front of the proposed building to the left-hand, in the driveway area, I should say, moving it over to the left-hand side of the property. There'd be a new pole, a new handhole installed at that point. And also in the rear of the property, there's an existing utility pole that services over to the Blanchard property. That, that pole will be relocated to the rear portion of the lot off the drain line and to the rear of the property, that'll still serve the furniture property. And also we'll be running a line from that pole to the light pole out on Main Street. Those are the main changes that we've had, showing the new curb openings and so forth on Richardson and Main Street.
You know, I'll. I should add that all of these improvements on the sidewalk and infrastructure are going to be at the expense of my client, that he's going to, he's going to do all this work in conjunction with the town. But he's going to, he is going to pay for that. Okay, so we can go back on that and then this is just a drainage plan, which has been reviewed by the town engineer, his satisfaction to show where the drainage is going to be on the site. So we added that sheet. All these plans now have a revision date of 3/18. And then finally, these are just the, the detail sheets that are typical that were worked out with Paul and the town engineer on specification for the drainage structures, et cetera. So those are revisions to the site plan, Mr. Chair, we're happy to take questions on that. If there aren't any, I'm happy to move on to the, to the landscaping plan.
Any questions, board members?
Just a quick, a quick one on the median. Why are we not sure that there's going to be a median placed in there? Brian, you expressed some doubt about that?
I think there will.
Did I hear you wrong?
No, I, I think there will be, but you know, Tom, until it's done, it's not done. You know, so the, the town traffic consultant said, you know, the bank might open before that median goes in. So that's why he wanted to post this, no left turn out of the driveway.
Okay, but there's every expectation that we put one put in.
Oh, I think so. I, I think, yeah, I think so, but you know, that's everything I've heard. But again, until it happens, it's not there.
In front of Bennett Street, right? Bennett Street, we contemplated as well, but we left it off the plane because it, it was contemplated but not there yet, right?
That's right.
Well, that's why I feel like that we wanted one put in for Bennett Street. Now we, it would be good to have here and we keep being told to wait for Envision and.
And years later.
That's all, it's all going to happen. I mean, that's, that's our expectation, so that's, that's the plan.
So how's the power get to the site?
Well, we have it over on Richardson Street off the right-hand side, over by the condominium on the opposite side of the street, there's power there. We'll be running that across to this existing pole right there at the corner of the property. And then that'll run down to the proposed, the relocation pole, which it does now. Then it'll run underground out to the street to handle the power for the utility pole, also handle the power for the building.
So there's no transformer at the building?
No. There's a, it's going to be working off, I believe, off the pole on the right-hand side where the condominium is. We'll be putting in a three-phase unit there and then running it across and servicing the site.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, board members?
Have we asked before and if we did, I apologize. Trash removal, how is that being handled?
Yeah, so we talked about that and banks are very specific, Chip, they cannot have dumpsters. Everything has to be secured in the bank and barrels and then it has to be shredded under state and federal law.
Okay.
So they'll have their own service that will pick up from inside. So we're not proposing any dumpster on the site.
Okay, sounds good. Good question, Chip, good to know. All right, anything else? All right, let's move on to landscaping.
Okay. Okay. So this is the landscaping plan that's been revised. The major revisions have occurred at this corner because if you remember, the sidewalk was going to be kind of way in here and now it's been pushed out to round around the corner, nice. So that's created a lot of opportunity here, so we're actually going to be able to have a grass lawn leading up to the landscaping. So it's not just like landscaping right up to the sidewalk. So we're, you know, Bob's kind of excited about that. And then, you know, the big thing I think was what's going to happen with the other lot. And you can see what we're proposing here, we're proposing that the area will be hydroceded with a drought tolerant seed mix. And then we're proposing some species that will plant, be planted up in the front of the lot and that that lot will be maintained just as the other one would until it's developed.
So Brian, maybe I wasn't clear. I certainly thought I was. I've always been talking about the left-hand side of this, like not out front, but the left-hand side of this lot, meaning right along all the parking spaces where it bumps in, going to the lot behind, needed something where your cursor is now. Was I not clear about that?
You might have been clear, maybe we just didn't hear it loud enough. So, you know.
I can't speak it loud enough, I mean, to me, that edge looks unfinished still.
Yeah, I don't think that.
Right, if, if you had a building in the, if you had something in Lot 1, you would be doing some screening along that edge. The plantings in front are nice, but they're going to just get moved when you do another street cop cut or something else. That, I wasn't concerned about looking into the site, I'm concerned about looking from the bank site into the empty lot.
Yeah, so are you talking about along this area, Chip?
And keep going.
And up, and up here?
And up in there.
Okay. Yeah, I don't, I mean, Bob, I don't think.
To me, this edge just looks unfinished. It looks like we've done two sides, the front side, Main Street doesn't get a whole lot. And then we have a left side that's unfinished.
I understand, I mean, Bob, I don't think you have an issue adding some landscaping in there, do you?
No, I just thought they wanted it to grass.
Yeah, we're happy to do it, Chip. I mean, we can have Jim Emmanuel, you know, modify this to put some landscaping in these areas.
Yeah, honestly, Chip, I don't remember if you said front or side or left or.
Do we want to remove it from the front?
Left about 27 times.
Just to clarify, you want to keep it on Main Street also or remove?
I don't care about Main Street. I, Main Street doesn't bother me at all looking into a grassy field. Okay. It's, it's the, it's the unfinished edge that bothers me about the landscape plan. You've got two sides, very nice and, you know, you've got to think about snow storage, you've got to, but, but that edge should be treated as if you had a building in Lot 1.
Okay.
All right, we can deal with that. I'm sorry, Bob?
I said, I think we misunderstood it before, I thought it was, you know, screening from the Main Street side. So we can.
We don't want, we don't want it to look lousy from the Main Street side and I think you're, I think your grass will look fine.
Okay.
Into, you know, into a nice grass lot. But it's really what happens as to what's happening from the bank to the potential building in Lot 1 and the screening that you may want to have there already in place.
Code requires it anyway. On parking edges.
We have no problem doing it, I think we just misunderstood it. So, but you know, point's well taken. I mean, dude, is the board, is the board consistent that the board would like to see this removed and revise the plan along the edge?
I'm fine with, with what he's proposing, basically, that is Chip is proposing.
To be clear, is there irrigation in there? And in the, in the hydroceded area?
Oh, no, because it's going to get ripped up, Mike.
Not too long, that's why it says it's, it's going to be a drought tolerant seed mix.
But, but there would be irrigation along this curb edge that we're now talking about landscaping.
It's going to have to be, that stuff's going to die.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. And I see that as a permanent in between the two lots. I don't see it as temporary.
It may be temporary because we may butt up the parking for the Lot 1 onto that side also.
No, you're right, no, you're right. Thus, thus Paul, Mr. Finocchio, that's why I say I don't see it as temporary because we're not going to end up with a big parking lot along the front of Main Street without green space. You may want to butt it up. It doesn't have to be huge, but a five-foot, seven-foot, some sort of evergreen, whatever ID, something.
Yeah. We're getting ahead of ourselves a little bit, but when we, when we develop this lot, Bob, Bob had told you about a common easement that exist, that will exist or exist. And so it, it will require approval of this board, but depending on what goes in here, we might look for a, a common driveway to access this. So people aren't coming off of Main Street, but that's, that's for a different study at a different day, at a different time and then, so.
Especially with having the ATM on the backside of that building.
Yeah.
Brian, my issue, if you were to remove the stuff in the front along Main Street, is that it's just going to be this open grass area that's going to have a lot of people thinking that this is, you know, a nice spot to hang out in and I don't know if that's what the owner wants. So I think by having that plantings in front there, it's one, going to look nice, but two, it's going to keep people off of his property.
Yeah, I don't think, I mean, Bob, how do you feel about keeping the stuff on Main Street? Do you have a thought on that?
Well, you heard one in favor and two against or two different?
I, I'm not, again, I'm not against, I just said. Yeah, and I'm not against it.
Yeah.
More landscaping is better, I just, that to me seems temporary where along the left-hand side, does it?
Right, I'm just interested in people that like to sit on benches and play instruments and have bag scattered all around them, I'm thinking that this is going to be a nice big open concert area for people.
But we're talking, but we're talking once Lot 2 is developed and by that time Lot 1 might have a plan and they might start construction soon after, so.
Okay.
Do we, do we really think that that lot's going to be sitting idle for months or years? No, assuming Bob's pursuing a tenant, you know, then I don't think it's going to, because this is all after lot, because they're going to use it for staging site for Lot 2, right? But.
Right.
So we're talking after this is developed and that's, you know, a year from now or more, right? Potentially, so I, I think, point taken. Re-revise the plan, whether you keep stuff in front. I'm not sure the board is really have strong feelings, maybe it'd be nice to have a few things, but we know they're temporary, it's more about the border with Lot 2. So. Are we good? Can we move on?
No.
No, okay.
Sorry. So this side of the street is, is representative basically and, and told us basically, and we all know it, is, is terrible. Everything else has been taken care of on the other side of the street and this has been like the, you know, the end of nowhere. I'm wondering whether with, with the dressing up of this starting point, basically, which it is a starting point and will affect the rest of the block, I'm wondering whether we should have some street trees here basically to finish this off and it will push forward basically up this, up the street eventually, but at least basically it will look more like what we want it to look like in the end. So why can't we put some street trees along this Main Street corridor?
No space.
They're moving the sidewalk out.
Right. Our sidewalk, all the, everything that we've done there, we've worked in concert with the town engineer because of Envision.
Yeah. I'm wondering, I mean, Envision's going to have street trees along there.
Yeah.
Why don't we start it now?
I don't know if they are, because they're going to have, they're going to have a center island with landscaping.
I, I hope, I hope they do it. I want to see this end of town look like the other end of town with trees and lights, similar lights and everything else. I don't want to see this thing sort of half-baked. I mean, look at the other side of the street, it's got street trees and everything else, it's very nice. And we're going to just leave bare sidewalk like it is now? I, I just, I don't understand.
I agree with that.
If they're on the sidewalk though, who put those street trees in? Is that town or do we?
Well, we had, well, we had CBS did there, did the trees, replaced the trees up there, basically, had them put them in when we did CBS, so that was CBS. What's that?
Who's responsible for maintaining them?
CBS was. The owner is.
Right. A lot of cities and towns make the, the owner care for them, at least for the first five years so they get established.
Any thoughts on rooftop, Gary?
Wait, wait, let's, let's, sorry, Joe. And Brian, are you willing to entertain that and look at that? As part of this plan?
We're just a little bit confused because, you know, we were directed to work with the town, you know, on the envision to make sure we met and we've done that. And this is exactly what the town engineer wanted because he said it's going to work with Envision, so. You know, I'm hesitant to, you know, I don't know, you're going to have to have a grass strip. You can't just plant trees in the middle or, you know, cut out pieces of concrete and, and I'm concerned that it's going to conflict.
You actually can.
Sure, it's going to conflict with the envision and, and, you know, and, you know, I just don't know where to go with it because.
Can you ask them? Just ask them. The board would like to see a couple of sidewalk trees on this, on this corner, on this site.
You can build a, you can build a tree pit into when you're building the infrastructure of the sidewalk. It's done all the time.
It's, it's done in front of CBS.
And all up and down Main Street in the square, right?
Yeah.
So I know, I, we get it, Brian, Envision is part of this, but can we just go back and ask? If this can be done.
Or are they, or ask them if they're planning on coming back and doing it later? And if the answer is yes, then why not do it now?
Right.
Or at least build the sidewalks in a way that will take a tree pit.
I'm, I'm sure we can look at the Envision plan and see what they've got in the plan that they put out some time back. I think if you look at the wording in the Traffic Advisory Commission study, I can't, I was looking to see, they had it here. They refer to the, to the Envision plan as not formally proposed. And there's another term and I can't remember, Brian, do you happen to have that report, the TAC report right there?
I do.
And as a, as an owner in downtown, let's just say the Gollatree store, we have a tree in front of there that is basically, I don't know who maintains it, but it's ripping up the sidewalk, the concrete and it's caused a tripping hazard. And it's never been repaired by the town. I pointed it out that the concrete is uneven because of the tree growing and the roots coming up. So this is in a tree box and it's got a grate over it and so forth, but it's still a tripping hazard with people. No one's tripped, as far as I know, no one sued me or the town agents. But, you know, if, if Envision is going to put these in concrete boxes on there, it was not in the plan as far as we know. The trees were supposed to be, I think, like the island in front of the post office and library, trees near the middle of the street. Brian, did you have the TAC wording?
Yeah, I'm looking at it.
Yeah. I think it's the first paragraph. Something about being not formally proposed.
Yep, hang on a second.
So it's kind of hard to comply with something that's, we don't know if it's going to be there or not. Well, if they're going to want it, if it is going to be there. I'm happy to do a couple of trees, I'm all for trees, but you know, they can be, they present issues and it might not even be warranted. If it's warranted, I'm happy to put them in.
It can be, if they're not done properly, but they can be done properly. Yeah, here's what it says, it says, "As part of the discussions at the TAC meeting, VHB noted that one of the early concepts prepared by the Envision Wakefield Plan shows a median along Main Street in this area that would prevent vehicles from turning left onto Main Street." Well, this concept has not been formally proposed or endorsed, the proponents should be aware that their Main Street site driveway could be limited to right turns in and right turns out in the future.
So we're doing that and we're enlarging the sidewalk to comply with the plan, but they never say anything about trees. And of course, it's not formally proposed, so. I mean, if you guys say you want to put in trees, if they formally propose it, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I mean, we can go back, I mean, you know, I mean, we're not adverse, you know. It's just a matter of time because, you know, we're, we're hoping to close this out as soon as possible. Bob has some commitments with the bank and, you know, that's, that's kind of, it's not that, it's not doing it or the expense, it's more just the time. Because we spent so much time with the town engineer that this didn't come up and I'm not blaming him. You know, sometimes things just kind of get picked up at the end, it's just the way it is, just part of it. So, but we're happy. Just part of it, so, but we're happy to, um, we're happy to float that, Mr. Chair.
Good, thank you. Okay, anything else on this plan, board members?
Okay, if I could just be clear, maybe just get some direction, what, what, where would the board wanna potentially see those, along Main Street or Richardson also?
I, I would like to see them along Main Street, basically, to continue that effort, that doesn't mean that I wouldn't like to see one on, one on Richardson as well, but you would wanna see them on Main Street, at least two, maybe even three. Depends on the spacing and where the light fixtures are as well.
And that also brings me to, are there street light posts along here? Along the sidewalk?
I believe there's one. And that's being relocated, that's the one that's in the existing driveway, proposed driveway, which is being relocated over to the left-hand side.
And, and Paul, remind me, does that match the rest of downtown at this point or not?
This curving, yes, right here.
No style, the lamppost style and, and shape and.
Yeah, we'll match whatever's supposed to be proposed by, because it's gonna be through the light department, and whatever they're proposing, we'll be putting in.
They're gonna put the same thing they take up, but just gonna move it up a few feet, that's all. Until they get around to that end of town.
Well, I guess, we, we prefer not to wait until they get around this end of town. I believe I was told informally that, um, what did they say, yeah? They have a different light under the Envision plan or whatever they're doing in Albion Street, but they weren't prepared to put it on Main Street over here yet. Is what I recall, that was informally with, um, Vinnie McMahon from the light department.
Yeah, they're putting that, they're putting that light on Albion Street and also down onto Foundry Street.
Yeah, I don't think, he didn't want us to put it here yet. So we, we're keeping what's there. Yeah.
I'm, I'm sure that's what's gonna happen, they're just gonna take and put a new box in and move the same fixture up the street a little bit. It's the end of it.
Yeah.
Until they, until they get to the whole damn street, because I understand also the light fixtures um, have a brighter, um, brighter coverage, basically, so the new, the newer lights, like on Main, the upper end of Main Street, basically need to be tighter spacing because they don't put out as much light. So I, I suspect in the end, they're gonna basically be doing some rewiring and relocation of a whole bunch of lights along there eventually, when they get there, down to that end of town.
Maybe so. They haven't informed, I don't think they've decided that yet. But you may be right.
But we've already got a pattern started on Foundry Street, I don't know why they'd be coming up with something different now. Wouldn't that be inconsistent with what's already going in at different places here?
Extremely. Although the ones on Albion Street, I think, are similar but higher or something, I don't know, they, they're really proportionally on a scale with the street. At least the images I've seen.
Okay.
I'm gonna, um, I actually emailed the town engineer, because sometimes you check his email, sometimes, uh, you know, I've asked him, I said, if you can hop on his Zoom for five minutes, just to give some information, because it might be helpful and save a lot of time, so I'll see if you respond.
Okay. In the meantime.
Moving on.
What's next?
Hey, Brian, just, there's a word relocate in the upper left-hand corner of this plan. What does that mean? What is that referencing? A plant, a tree?
That's a relocated light pole that was, it says relocate pole, and it's like this, the pole's being moved to the back.
Oh, okay.
That's, uh, the power, get it, basically, the pole there is sitting on top of the drain line.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, which plan is next, Brian? Brian, you on mute?
Thank you. We'll see if he hops on, I asked him if he was available, if he could hop on the Zoom for a minute, so perhaps he'll see his email, he will, if he doesn't, he doesn't, so.
Yeah.
Uh, the next thing I wanted to show was the revised elevation and signage.
Okay.
There we go. Okay. Tom, are you here?
Yeah, Brian, I'm on.
Okay, yeah, just in case something comes up, I needed you teed up here, so this is, this really just goes through the, the board wanted some more detail on what's being proposed for the exterior signage, I know um, Mr. McVane's had an opportunity to look at this and do some calculations, and I have also. Um, so these are the elevations, this, uh, we did update this elevation, you had asked us to, to do it, and Tom did his best, um, as far as the landscaping goes. I think it's actually, Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that grass strip's actually gonna get wider, right, because of the sidewalk?
Yes, that, that, uh, last change that the city engineer had us pushing that sidewalk out slightly will actually increase that slightly.
You're actually gonna get more green space over here with grass, because it, Tom had already done this before, we could revise the landscape plan with what happened with the sidewalk on that corner. Um, so this, this really identifies, you know, the, the, the specific signage locations. Um, we've submitted this to you, and it's probably easier to go to the, the next sheets, because it highlights it. These are halo lit signs. The front, front of the building. Directional, and then this is, this is on the parking lot sign that we're proposing a, um, white halo letter sign. This is on the Richardson side, same thing. No freestanding sign, and this is the, um, the ATM. With a little bit more detail on it.
Brian, what's on that door sign?
Let me go there, hold on a second.
I tried to zoom in.
Where, where do you wanna go, Greg?
The door sign, looks like the door sticker essentially.
Yeah, uh, let me get, there's a detail on that, um, we think there's a bit. Do this, hold on. Whoa. There you go. Do you see that, Greg?
Okay, yeah.
Just the hours. So this, this, you know, I think Jim will concur, because it's so much frontage, this is not in the sign overlay district, so it meets the, the total signage. Um, I think the one that potentially arguably could have an issue is this, because um, it could be interpreted that the whole red is part of the sign. Um, and it, and I think Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's a 50-square-foot limit on signs.
Yes, it also, it also states that the background is part of the sign. And they're basically, just together with a background, background on which are displayed, the signs, basically, so that red is actually part of the sign, because it's on that surface, so you've got two signs that exceed 50% alone. But you're correct in that, based on the frontage, that it does not exceed the total allowed signage in aggregate. On the other hand, um, this one sign, when you take it all encompassing, basically, is more than 50 square feet, each one of them. And if you consider that the sign is, is got some dimension to it, that it's also red on the sides, then it even adds more to it, basically, so. Um, the upper, the upper one's about, um, 52 square feet, basically just on the face, never mind the sides. If you take into account the sides of it, it's 64 square feet. And the lower, the lower sign basically is, is 89 square feet with the red included. But if you take into account the side, then you've got, uh, about 130 or something like that total, so. What the board has got to decide, basically, one, whether in fact, under definition, this sign is all in one, basically, or all in components, basically, with a flame on the top and, uh, and the, uh, uh, sand danner at the bottom with the red background. It just, it says in the code, it says, "The area of the sign shall be uh, considered to include all lettering words, um, accomplished, accompanying the designs and symbols, together with background on which they are displayed." So to me, that says the background that displayed is part of the sign.
I feel like that's so subjective.
Well, that, that's, that's why it's here, for you guys to say something.
Yeah, I mean, if it was a separate, if that whole red thing was, you know, outlined and had a border and was affixed to the building, then I would agree with that, but where it's the side of the building, I, I don't know, I just, I think it's kind of, I think it's silly.
Maybe silly, but that's the way it reads.
But to be interpreted by us.
That's right. Brian, hold that one right there for a minute, and to the right. Um, the photo to the right, there's a freestanding sign that looks like it's in the sidewalk. Past that person standing out front, coming out of the driveway, no, not that one, further up.
Over here.
Right there. Is that in the sidewalk?
Tom, can you address that?
There's new DF directional sign in the package you gave us, number six.
Tom, are you there?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I think that was supposed to be in that small landscape, landscape strip there where the load, uh, the handicap loading area is, it may appear like it's on the, on the sidewalk and not in the, the right spot, but obviously it's directional signage to indicate the entrance and you know, where to, to proceed for the drive-up.
But then six is, six is pointing right to the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a problem.
And you can't put it in the handicap space.
Yeah, why are we putting sign there? What's it directionally telling people? To go around to Richardson?
Exactly, for the, for, for the, um, for the drive-up or parking at that entrance.
Well, I think it's pretty self-explanatory, right? It's a small building.
Yeah.
Can you go back to the earlier photo that you had just before this one?
I can't.
Am, am I wrong in that there's two of these things?
Hang on, hang on, Mike, let me get there.
There are two.
Yeah. So signage-wise, do they, do they, they trip any, um, calculations, or is it just the placement's just off?
No, they, they, there, it's the aggregate, which means all of the signs, basically, are can, are aggregate allowed, basically, which is the linear length of, of frontage, basically, on both streets, times 1.5, basically, comes out to 279 square feet. And my, by my calculation, which I did separate of what we, we're given, you come out to 264, so. As far as the quantity of signage, basically, or the aggregate area of signage, this is compliant. Even with the red, with, with the red border piece of this, all right?
Yeah.
So the only, the only decision basically is, do we grant them those two signs, basically, being over 50 square feet?
I mean, my personal opinion is if you don't have that red there, the building is horrible, you know, it, it almost needs a little color, it needs a little something, it's so gray and glass that, you know, often, like, I don't like the halos around gas stations and all that, but this one doesn't jump out as being so bad to me. Personal opinion.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Yeah, plus all the letters are gonna be halo, right? This red thing is just flat, it's just a panel, right?
That, that's correct, just the white lettering and, and logo.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it either. So number six, we gotta look at its location, right, make sure it's on your property and not on the sidewalk or something, right? Are there any?
Yeah, we, we could eliminate that if there's, there's an issue.
Also, look at number seven.
Hmm. Let me get there, Tom, hold on, so we can. There you go.
I think it's the same issue.
Yeah. How it's gonna fit?
Yeah.
That one looked like it was tucked right in next to the red panel. Picture did. Below does not.
See, I think this.
Brian, there, there, unfortunately, the changes from the, from, um, from the site that took place with the engineer's review came in so late that they're using the old site plan, so that this site plan doesn't show the extended area on Richardson, so. The rendering is probably more accurate than that site plan you were referencing.
Yeah.
So we've got an updated site and just confirm the location of six and seven on the property, okay?
Yeah.
Any other sign questions, board members?
And just, just real quick, it looks like, Brian, this, I, I think we moved on too quickly when I was trying to see what was on that sign. It looks like it, it looks like it does have the phone number on there, and we just went through, we made a small business owner, who I think I have more empathy for than a big bank, go and remove their, their, um.
I don't think, they're right here.
No, 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 the door sign that we were talking about first, the one that we moved on quickly from, um.
Let me get, let me get back.
Again, it's super small, so maybe I'm making, you know, making a mistake here, but on the left door sign.
Hang on.
Hope you were on it.
I'm almost there. There you go.
I, I can't tell, but it looks like that's a phone number and a website, I mean, we just went through and, you know, made someone remove that.
So I, I'm sure the bank wouldn't have an objection to removing it if they're allowed to, it may be a regulatory issue. But if it's not, then, then by all means, they, they'll remove it.
I used to be a bank regulatory lawyer, and that's one I've never heard of, but.
Well, you should recognize some of those symbols on there.
I said used to, I said used to.
All right.
So you know about the dumpsters.
Yeah. All right, any, anything else, board members?
Brian, maybe we can clarify between Tom and myself, and go back to the, uh, for the one that they thought looked like it was, uh, in the sidewalk, directing people to the ATM.
Right there, Bob?
No, the, um, the, the, uh, showed, well, yeah, okay, it looks like it's on the sidewalk, um, and I think I heard Tom say that it wasn't necessary, because as Amy said, people, it's not a huge site, people could just know enough to go around to the rear to get to the ATM. But, uh, if they did want it there, um, you know, I don't know if there's enough room, Tom could probably comment, and I can, but it could you know, just, just put it on a, um, same kind of post, you put a handicap sign on and, uh, and just put it in the ground there.
I think.
And with regard to the one that's in closest to us in the forefront, the closest to Richardson, uh, I think what Tom was saying, maybe I missed because Richardson, uh, because our land is being pushed out into Richardson, because the sidewalk is now in my land, that that, there's plenty, there's much more land there for that particular ATM, uh, to be, uh, say, behind the red, uh.
I think that, yeah, I think this one's more important, because as people are coming down Main Street, because it, it, they're gonna be able to see if they wanna go to the ATM to take the right on Richardson, instead of going past, and then try to get into the ATM this way, which they can't.
I, I would, I would suggest go to the, the final landscape plan you presented and look at that, because that should be the most accurate plan. Room for these things to be planted where you're showing them.
Okay, hold on. Okay, hold on. Let me figure that out.
I, I'm, I'm sure that's exactly how it evolved, that, that this, the, the sign that's on the corner was not visible initially because of where the sidewalk was. But now that that sidewalk and landscape area has been widened, it's actually visible from Main Street. So I don't think we need the one at the Main Street entrance, the number six sign.
There you go, Jim, he's hit.
Yeah, so, so you can, so you've got enough room to put it on the right side of the building, you don't have any room on the left side.
Correct.
Yeah, agreed.
And, and Tom? We can take the ones from the left side and basically eliminate that?
Yes, I think that's an easy, easy solution, the best solution.
Thanks.
Okay, anything else, board members?
Uh, yes, Brian, this is not something that's going to be lit up all night, right?
That's gonna, so that's good, Joe, that's a good question, that's going to be part of what I'm going to talk about in the, in the.
Contingent conditions, all right. Beautiful.
Yep. And Mr. Chair, the town engineer, Mr. Renault, actually did email me back, he said he is going to get on, oh, there he is.
He's, he's actually on, hello, everybody.
Hi, Bill.
Hi, Bill.
How's it going?
I figured I'd ask you to come on and take some heat.
Sounds good. Always, always happy to do that on a Wednesday, you know?
Make you feel at home.
You know it.
I think, Mr. Chair, do you want to address Mr. Renault, what the issues are? That were raised? Um, or I can, I can, I'm happy to do it.
Yeah, please, please.
I'll put the site plan up.
Yep.
Probably help, let me see here, stop share. So, Bill, um, couple of issues that were raised by the board, uh, let me get to the right. This is the, the, that they wanted to discuss was, um, it was, first of all, the question came up, um, because we talked about the fact that we're going to have no left-hand, left-hand turn lane, and Mr. Lucy wanted to know, how, how sure are we that there's actually going to be a median that's going to go in here as part of, a part of Envision?
Um, I would say pretty, pretty sure, I mean, it's been a, was a, a pretty lengthy discussion on the medians and trying to put them wherever we could. Um, I mean, we've talked with the applicant, and he's comfortable with that condition. So, you know, if there was a need to, to revise it, we would. But, I mean, in this case, I think we're, we're going to have a break to get into,
Bill, I think.
Get into the Armory Street and into.
I go ahead. Oh, I think everybody wants it. I think that the concern was that potentially it wouldn't happen. I think, I think, um, Mr. Lucy wants it, and he was just concerned that it wouldn't be. It won't go in, and said, "If it's not going to go in, then we might want to do it now as part of this." So that was, that was kind of the question, right, Tom? Did I get that right?
Absolutely.
So it's not that he, it's not that the board doesn't want it, the board wants it, and they just want to make sure that it's actually going to happen. So what, what percentage is it that it's?
Yeah. I, I think that's the consensus from what we've been hearing in the meetings, so I, I'm not seeing that any of the islands actually really moving at this point. I think that the geometry, for the most part, is fairly locked in, we'd be looking at small tweaks here and there, but I, I'm expecting that to go in.
And down across Bennett, too, because that was contemplated for that project, too, Bill. In front of. Front of the middle school.
Yep, yep, it extends down, it actually widens out in front of the middle school. So, you know, we have a much wider, almost like a little mini kind of islands in there, like a large, rather than just a median strip. It's more of like a larger island.
Right. Okay, no, that was contemplated there, too, and we're just, now this project is in front of us, and we're having the same conversation, but thank you for that. The other issue, Bill, was that, um, you know, we worked out on the sidewalk location to make it work with Envision, and, and Board Member McCain was requesting that we put some street trees, uh, in the sidewalk area, uh, maybe three of them on Main Street, and then maybe one on Richardson. And we, I just didn't know how that works with Envision, if that's contemplated, or, so I figured that that would be a question.
Um, I, I mean, I think that would be the next round of detail that we'd be getting into, to be honest with you. Um, the, the intent here is that because we're so close to the rail to trail, that's why that sidewalk's so wide, at least on Richardson, and kind of in this area, because we want to be able to get people into the rail to trail. So, um, you know, the, the, the goal was to try to keep a ten-foot-wide sidewalk, so that, you know, you'd have enough room for bikes and pedestrians. That being said, I mean, we could look to do that, I, I'm not saying no, maybe a little bit further down as you get more towards the edge of the property line, or the edge of the, the new parking lot. It might make more sense down there.
Bill.
I'm thinking. Yep.
So, um, my concern is, it has been this way for a long time, ever since CBS, really. Was this side of the street looks so lousy, because it doesn't reflect what happens on the opposite side of the street. It doesn't reflect what happens on the north end of Main Street. And if, if we want this part to look like the rest of the town, and it hasn't for a long time, then we need to have lighting that looks like the rest of the town, we need to have trees along the sidewalk, so it looks like the rest of the town. And to me, to, to start to generate and germinate, basically, what happens on the street with this first new building on it, on this part of it, basically, that we should be putting trees in, and we should be putting them in now, and not wait for someone to decide later whether they're going to do it or not, or whether the sidewalks widen or not. I'd rather see some trees and decorate the town, because the medium is not going to have trees in it, it's going to be a narrow medium. When you get down in front of the Junior High, yeah, that's probably going to have trees, because it's going to be nice and wide. It's going to be like the Fire North End. So to me, we should be dressing up this side of the street like we have the other side. That's, that's where my push is.
Yeah, I, I see the point, and, and I don't disagree with it, but at the same time, though, you also have that park that's going to be, you know, at the, kind of the Richardson, um, the, the other side of Richardson Street, right? So you're going to have that park that's there, that's going to have trees, you're going to have that look. Um, and we have a lot more space as we go further down the road.
That's too far away. Plus, I've also seen that, I've seen schemes where that showed that park becoming a parking lot for the rails and trails. So I don't know.
No, that's not happening. I mean, the rail to trail parking lot, the rail to trail parking lot is off of Richardson. You can see that the access driveway in where the rail to trail on the plan, it's going to be on the opposite side of the property line in the railroad right away. So it's, it's, it's not in that section, that, that area is going to be a park, it's intended to be a park, have trees, plantings, you know, uh, you know, kind of a beautification type of thing, that's, that's the intent there. Um, I, I mean, I think the, a tree at the corner where they're working, um, you know, with, with, you know, the, the sidewalk in Richardson, because they're going to have to, you know, essentially ship this whole roadway, so they have some work across the street as well. We could put it on the back of sidewalk in that, where that park's going to be, that would be, I, I think, a good compromise. Um, and we can try to fit one in, in the frontage of the property on Main Street. I just have to take a better look at what's out there and how that fits in with the rest of the plan.
Yeah.
If I had the question beforehand, I would have probably had a better answer than that, but unfortunately, that's the best I could come up with right now.
Well, that's, that's why you brought in, basically, so, so we knew more what's happening. I just, it's been one of my pushes for a long time, basically, I can see two on the front of this, and maybe one up the side, basically, that's something, but also Rich, also the Bennett Street project basically put money into that park in a crosswalk as well, so that's, that's sitting in the coffer somewhere at Town Hall.
Yeah, yeah, it, it, it is, but we also have, I mean, as part of the, the rail to trail project, that's going to have a much larger enhancement for that whole crossing, too. So, I, I mean, it's all basically in that plan right now and being developed, so. Yeah, I mean, what, what about trying to put it at the corner, the inner side? I know you were just talking about the sign to go in that planting area, what if there was a tree that was placed kind of at the corner of Richardson and Main that gives you that, you know, on the back of sidewalk, even if it's, you know, on, on the applicant's property, I mean, that will still give you the look.
No.
And maintenance.
I'm really looking for street trees, and, and maybe at a minimum two, but not one.
Well, I, I would say do one in the park, do one on their property at the corner of Richardson, so you have one on either side of the street there. And then if you want the third one, we can try to see if we can squeeze it in, um, you know, kind of towards the, the, I, I mean, I still think you could even, depending on what the plan is for the larger development down the road, is see if you want to put it maybe at the edge of the parking lot, kind of where that last space is. So it's in the back of sidewalk.
That's possible.
Yeah, I mean, the, the problem you run into when you start doing street trees is we, you have to grate them, you have to make sure that you have that accessible width, and you're tight as it is right now. I mean, I know we're gaining a foot, a foot and a half, I believe, with the, you know, jetting out a bit, but that's not a ton of room necessarily for a thriving tree to live. So, I mean, really, you'd be looking at putting something in, and I would expect that you'd probably be replacing that tree. Because we don't, we don't have, we don't have the tree lawn and the planting lawn and the grass strip there, we don't have the room for it. So, you know, that's, that's why I'm, you know. I, I mean, if you wanted to condition it for three, and we can figure out where we can fit them as part of the right-of-way permit, I could, I could do something like that, and.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Bill, do you know, thanks, Bill, do you know anything on the streetlights, Bill, what the light department's planning with the vision on, on this, any idea?
Uh, yeah, that, that's been a long conversation, so, um, it looks like we're trying to do some type of fluted pole, so it'll be pretty decorative, um, but we haven't selected the heads or the poles. So what we're going to do is basically start with a, a, um, kind of a, 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 a more standardized pole for Albion Street, and get that part of the project done as, for the work that's going on right now. And then we would have a, kind of more of a palette discussion, um, more towards a seventy-five percent design area. I mean, we're barely getting through the twenty-five right now. So, um, a lot of this is down the road to determine exactly what they're going to look like. And then what's going to end up happening is the, the light plant's going to replace all the, the poles downtown to match that theme and whatever we choose. So, you know, Albion Street will eventually be changed out when Main Street's reconstructed. So they're trying to make one kind of holistic look and plan for the whole area.
Anyway, continue down.
Oh, God, yeah, yeah, all the way down to, all the way down in the heart, and a little bit beyond.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I don't, those were the key points, right, Brian? That was it. Board members?
Yeah. Nope.
Was there another, something else, board members? Before we let Bill get back to his Wednesday night? Thank you, Bill.
No problem.
We appreciate you jumping on, all right. Have a good night.
No problem, good luck, everyone, we'll see you, good night.
Mr. Chairman, I had a question, please.
Uh, we're not ready, Brian.
Okay.
Opening up the public testimony yet. Board members, anything else on this plan, signage? All right, Brian, which plan was next? Brian, you on mute again, you're on mute again. Thank you, Mr. Chair, sorry about that, I had the draft conditions if the board wanted to go over those. Yeah, we don't, I see the package you'd sent us had interior signs and stuff, does anyone want to go through those, or those more at the bank's disposal and discretion? I don't think we have to go through those, do we? No. Yeah, okay. Okay, you ready, board members, for this next part? All right, let's take it away, Brian. Okay. Second. Just going to find it. And there was an amended version with some inputs from Bill, although he dropped off, but yeah. Here we go. You're going to bring up that version, okay? Let me see if I can. Here we go. Yeah, this is a little bit revised from what you received, because a lot of this stuff was dealt with, with Bill and O, uh, when we had the zooms, we, you know, went over these in detail with him. So I'm just going to, kind of go fairly quickly, because you seem, I'll point out where the changes have been made. First is, uh, snow, in, in what I, you know, I kind of, um, took the liberty, and it's certainly up to the board to, to pull that back, and you, you know, you, you decide, but I just thought that this project was too small for an operation and maintenance plan. I thought it was similar to what, what the project, the, the gas station that you did down in Greenwood, and you, you just incorporated some stuff that might be deemed O and M into conditions of the decision. Um, because it's not like one of these, um, you know, multifamilies that you want to know how dry events are going to be maintained and stuff like that. So, um, so the, the first condition is snow, snow storage may occur on the property so long as parking spaces are not lost as a result of snow storage, and the event snow storage approaches upon parking spaces or results in the loss of parking spaces, then snow shall be removed from the property. Pretty simple and pretty standard. Uh, two landscaping features of the property, including all lawn areas, trees, shrubs, flowering plants, planting mulch beds, irrigation components and walkways be managed and maintained through a combination of ongoing seasonal inspection, as well as task-specific or scope-specific management and maintenance. Landscaping features shall be maintained and good in conditions at all time, and any dead, broken, or one-out landscaping features shall be replaced on a regular basis.
Well, Brian, let me ask a question, just because I don't know the answer. Um, tree dies, stub, stub, August left, how do we get it replaced?
You, you.
Who, who is in charge of that?
Building inspector.
Our zoning enforcement officer?
Yeah, the building inspector would send a, a letter saying.
Okay.
Fix it.
I, I, I ask because Irving has had seven trees missing for five years.
Yeah, that's how it's done.
Yeah, okay. And I'm sure we have that condition in Irving.
I'm sure you do. Yep. So lighting, I left this open, because I, I'm sure, I was sure the board wanted to discuss this, I put the display window lights, any signs, lights, and parking lot lights should be maintained and should be turned off from, um, that's your decision, uh, hour after closing until blank hour prior to opening. Dim safety and ATM lighting in the building may, may retain, remain on at all times. What have we done, thirty or sixty minutes after closing, typically?
Yeah, or just, or a time.
Well, the bank is ours, so.
Yeah, banks close a lot earlier, so after closing, it's probably better than the time.
Brian. Brian, it's Bob.
Bob, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, maybe could you ask Tom to comment on this, because my initial is ATMs don't close. So for a safety factor, we might want to leave those parking li- lights. One, maybe, or something, Tom can comment better than I can about the need for safety lighting at the ATM that's open twenty-four hours, which most, all ATMs are apparently. Tommy, you there?
Yeah, I'm here, yes, both the drive-up and the vestibule are, are obviously, um, twenty-four-hour access, so, uh, the branch would close down, the signage would shut off as, as prescribed by the bylaws. The vestibule would obviously remain lit, um, for safety reasons. The drive-up ATM would have a down light in the, the overhang, in the canopy, that would remain lit. I don't know, Bob, that any of the parking it really needs to stay on, there is street, uh, street lights. So I don't know that we have to, I, I don't know that it's an issue to have the parking lots stay on or not. I don't think, um, you know, we've had, had other, other locations where, where those have to go off. If it becomes a safety issue, I think, you know, we, we would then raise, raise the issue, but, that's, that's where we're at with that.
Okay, thanks, Tom.
So I have one question regarding the vestibule. Does it have to be on, or can it be done with a motion sensor and, you know, activate when somebody comes up to the door?
No, it has, it has to be on.
To whose regulation?
Uh, I, I mean, just the banks, I mean, would you go up to use a, an ATM if there was no lights on it? There could be someone in there waiting for you to come in.
That would be the light turning on before you go in.
Well, not if they're in there being still, I mean, this is a secure, a very sensitive issue with the security of the ATM.
Do something as people walk up to flash their card.
What about dim lighting, and then motion after that?
Dirty things too, also, if somebody's doing stuff in there that they shouldn't be doing, trying to rob it or something, that there's light on.
I, you know, the thing is, it needs to be encouraging for someone to use it, if it's like, if it's out and the person doesn't know it's motion-sensitive or whatever, they might just not go to the bank. So I think it really needs to be, remain on, so at least it encourages someone to use that particular ocean and, and know that they're somewhat safe. It's no different than, than other ATMs up the street and, um, or the savings bank.
Chip, it does say that it's dim lighting.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, so do we want to spec the time, so turned off when, hour after closing? Thirty minutes after closing?
Well, what's closing, like, four, four in the afternoon?
It probably varies, sometimes on certain days they'll stay open later. Thursday, Fridays, you know, Saturdays all close earlier.
I mean, so, you know, it's one of the things to think about is, you know, you're trying to create a streetscape, you know, if they close at four o'clock and it's the winter time, you know, might it be nice to have it on?
Yeah, I, I, I'm more.
Pides up Main Street, shows activity, it's.
No. It's just adding more light pollution, no, there's safety lighting and ATM lighting, we don't need to keep, as it is, Brian, Hallmark is lit like a.
As it is, Brian, Hallmark is lit like a downtown Christmas tree twenty-four hours a day. And it's ridiculous. I, I, no, not in my opinion. No. We gotta, we gotta do something. So.
No, well, no, I know the, I know the, there needs to be a limit, but I'm saying if the bank closes at four in the winter time, do you, do you really want the building dock at, at four o'clock in, in the downtown area? I mean.
Why do the lights have to be on?
I think you want to create a streetscape. I mean, you want to show there's activity in that area. Um, you know, you, you don't want to create a dock, you know, people walking on the street. Um, I mean, yeah, it's subjective. I mean, it's your decision. That's just my.
But so guys, let's just think about this. You're coming up, you got Walgreens lights on, you got McDonald's lights on. You know, there's lights on up and down all this that to have a dark building at six o'clock at night makes no sense to me. That you're not accomplishing anything unless everybody else shuts it off at six.
But they close at nine. So that's different. Or McDonald's is open till eleven. It's a different time.
Yeah, but u- usually there's.
That's why I'm saying I think we should do it by an hour, not by closing.
There's, there's also emergency lighting systems that generally they go into that mode. So there is a, there is a system in place that usually keeps it lit to some level.
Right, there'd be safety lit, right? Dim lighting inside the building and the ATM. It wouldn't be a completely dark corner.
Right, exactly.
But we don't know what that is. Right? You don't know. It says it, but how much, what level? We have no idea what it is.
Into level set chip, I don't think anyone's saying to close, uh, to turn off the lights at closing because you can't. There'll still be people in the building. I don't think.
And then define dimmed safety. What does that mean? My definition of dim safety may be real different than the banks.
Can Tom or someone speak to what that means for a banker?
Well, I can, I can tell you that, um, a lot of these branches, new branches like this where to meet the energy code, the lighting sys- there are lighting systems that, um, shut off, you know, the majority of the lighting at a certain time, you know, at whatever the pre-programmed time would be. Um, so typically, you know, most days they're closing at four, four thirty. Um, but then there, you know, there, they might still be in there until a little after five. Then there's cleaning staff. Um, with, with Santon there, I believe they typically have those, those lighting controls set to go off at seven o'clock. Now there are overrides or should someone be, have to go in after hours that can, they can turn lights on, but basically the overlay override is just for like a twenty minute period. So that would be normal. And then, uh, it's not emergency lighting. It's, it's just night light. So there are a very probably less than ten percent of, of fixtures, which are just night lights that stay on for, um, ju- I guess you call it, I guess at some degree it is security because if someone comes in, um, you know, early in the morning, whatever, they, they have to be able to see where they're going um, to get into the space. But, um, the majority of it does go off at, you know, uh, their branches, they'll have them shut off at seven. Now that's, that might be more than an hour, but clearly it's still very, you know, more than an hour on, on some of the days they close, but it's, it's also gives them time to clean the branch without, you know, having to, to leave lights on any, any longer than necessary.
I believe there are code requirements set under NFPA or some other code basically that says like every so many fixtures have to be lit to a certain level. So if you're in an office space, it's like every six fixtures or every eight fixtures or something like that. So that they, so there's.
Yeah, it's basically illuminating the, the egress path.
Right.
And that's pretty easy to do in a, in a branch that's wide open like this, as small as this is.
I don't see it as an issue.
Yeah, can we, can we come to some consensus? I don't want to spend a half an hour on what time the lights go on or not.
Seven PM, exactly what Santander sets their times to.
All right. Does anyone have a problem with that?
No.
No.
One hour prior to opening? Something? I don't know when they're opening. It's probably daylight though always, but.
Uh, not, not during the, they may be in, I'd say an hour before opening.
Okay. All right, next condition, Brian.
Just made that change. Um, okay. Um, basically this is a standard board retained jurisdiction for, um, changes. We talked about that.
Yeah.
Uh, project has to be completed, uh, shall be shown on the site plan, landscaping plan, architectural plan. We don't have the word substantially in there. I'm learning. Um, number six, um, there's an existing concrete drainage culvert extends through the rear of the property. This was the town engineer. Building permit plans for the proposed building shall include a foundation designed by a licensed structural engineer designed to prevent any building loads from applying pressure to the culvert or any potential for undermining the new building foundation should work or replacement need to be done on the cover. This design shall be subject to review and approval by the Wakefield Town Engineer in Building Inspector prior to obtaining a building permit for the proposed building. Just to make sure we don't do any damage to the cover and we protect it appropriately.
Just a comment to the language on that, Brian. You should change it to this, this design shall be reviewed and approved. I don't want to get into a situation where, you know, send an email on a Friday night and you never hear back from the town engineer and say, well, we gave them the opportunity.
Yeah. Can you see the changes I'm making on the screen?
Yeah. Yep.
Great, okay. That look good, Greg?
Yep.
Great. Thank you. Uh, seven. The, the, uh, so the Department of Public Works or its designated shall have the right from time to time to inspect, maintain and to replace uh, the existing concrete box culvert that extends through the rear of the property is shown in the site plan. Work should be done to minimize impact of the use of the property if required by town council, Tom Mullin. The applicant shall execute and deliver a legal document such as an easement or covenant satisfactory to town council in the Wakefield Town Engineer confirming the same.
Um, does town council even really have the authority to require anything? He can recommend that the town require some board in the town or something required, but I don't think town council as an employee of the town, not an official of the town, has that authority.
Uh, he does if you designate it to him. And, and that's what you're doing in this condition. So, I mean, this has been done in the past and he has required it. Because he's the one that, that, um, is going to decide what he wants, um, for, you know, what the Department of Public Works is looking for.
Yeah, I mean, I'm comfortable, especially with the satisfactory to town council. So, um.
And we, and we want to work this out with them because there, there's like an old.
No, understood.
Yeah, you know, and we want to, we want to have the parameters on how this works. So.
Okay, yeah, no, I'm fine.
Okay, the applicant shall allow the Department of Public Works or is does he need reasonable access on the easterly boundary of the lot that may be necessary for the anticipated construction of the rail to trail project conditioned upon the Department of Public Works? Or is does he need being responsible repair any disturbance or damage that they caused? The, the engine, town engineer said, you know, when they do the rail or trail, they might need to kind of like do some sloping and grading and, and they might need to come on our lot. So they wanted that and then we're fine with that. Um, nine, the temporary landscaping improvements on lot, one on the landscaping plan, and I'm defining those as a lot, one landscaping improvement shall be done at the same time that the landscaping improvements are done on the lot two. On lot two on the landscaping planet unless the board appeals in its sole discretion extends the time for the lot one landscaping improvements to occur. You know, we kind of danced around this. We said, oh, we might want to wait a few months and we're just saying we're going to do it. Um, when we do the other landscaping, if we're close to a deal, we might come back and say, hey, guys, we're going to be filing next week for this. Can we hold off on lot? Uh, two, I'm sorry, on lot one, and that will be up to you. Just seemed to be the simplest way to do it.
Okay.
Uh, ten, based on the stormwater management by law, the project is required to develop a stormwater pollution plan. This is just a standard thing that the town engineer wants that we're going to give them a swift plan. So, um, and the next one is the environmental monitor, which we're fine with. That he, that's a condition that he wanted. Uh, twelve is as built drawings, which your board wants and he wants. Um, and I should probably get rid of this, has been completed, um, in compliance instead of. Okay. I'm learning, Greg. Um, the test hole thirteen is a condition that, uh, he wanted. This is specific to him that we provided, um, a drainage study, but the, um, um, uh, the, the, we weren't able to do test holes where the exact drainage system's going because the building is there. So he wants some confirmation, uh, testing done prior to the installation of that drainage system and the, and the, uh, is telling us we might need to do some revisions depending on what happens with that testing. And fourteen, um, this was a concern of the town engineer and, and so I gave discretion on the board on this. Um, he's concerned that people will ignore the one way on Richardson and try to exit on Richardson. So if that becomes a problem, that's what fourteen is, it says in the event that the board, that is you, determines that vehicles are consistently ignoring the one way traffic requires the Richard- Richardson Street entrance to the property and using it to exit the property in the Wakefield Town Engineer and Traffic Safety Officer may in its sole discretion require additional mitigative measures to deter that from occurring.
Uh, Brian, shouldn't the in its sole discretion be really the board? And if it's in our discretion, then they can require additional mitigative.
Uh, Greg, I agree with you a hundred percent. And, you know, I said that to him and, you know, that's the way he wanted it. So I, 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 I agree with you a hundred percent. It should be you. And then you ask them what you want, what they think is right, and then you would mandate it. So I, I agree. So, um, then the board, right?
Guys, is this making us like traffic cops?
That's. Well, that's not. Well, that's not really even where I'm saying in the sole discretion. It should be.
You didn't like.
So this, uh, the sole discretion should really be up in that first. If the board determines in its sole discretion.
Oh, okay.
Ignoring, then the, the town engineer doesn't get to have any discretion on, they have discretion on what they can recommend, but.
But is this that somebody brings it back up in front of us? I mean, what does this mean?
Yeah, what, what do we mean, Chip, is that, um, in this, again, this was a, a concern that he had that I'm, that we're trying to address. So the, his concern is that the one way in off of Richardson, if people just started ignoring that, uh, in trying to use it as an exit to like take a shortcut, that, that, that issue could get raised and he, there might be more mitigative measures that someone will require such as additional signage. Um, you know, something like that to, to, you know, to really try to deter.
So let's say, uh, uh, let's say a person comes to us and says everybody's turning left out of here. Nobody should be doing that. What do we then do? Do we test it? Do we have us? The police monitor it? I mean, I don't care how we.
That's the point of, Chip, that's the point of us adding in the, in its sole discretion. Then depending on the, uh, I don't know what you want to call it, quality of the report to us, quality of the evidence to us.
That's a nice way to put it.
We can then do whatever, however we determine we feel the need to, to come up with a plan. If it's a one-off person who just says, no, this is what happened, then we take, no, that's fine.
I guess my question is, why is it us? Why isn't it the police or the traffic advisory committee or s- some, I mean, we're a zoning board. Now we're getting into traffic mitigation.
Well, it's on the site, Chip. I mean.
It'd be changed the site.
Is it on the site or is it really?
No, this is, this is a, this is a Main Street chip. This is the, you know, how there's a.
Richardson.
Yeah. Yeah. So if people are, are ignoring that, that's, that's why, you know, that's why he, I, I, you know, I don't, I, I, I'm kind of in awkward position. I didn't see the need for this. I put it up there because he wanted it. You know, so, um, you know, if you don't want it, that's, that's.
Fine. I just, I'm tired of putting conditions in that we have no, no authority to get any, I mean, we have so many conditions that are being broken in so many of our situations with no hammer to be able to do anything about it. Right? Look at the, look at the no left turn at Dunkin' Donuts right down the road.
And there's a sign there.
Oh, yeah.
Ignore it on a daily basis.
Anyway, that I, little bit of a soapbox on my part, but continue.
Do you want to leave it?
If you think it needs to be in there.
Well, since I told him I put it in there, I think it needs to be in there.
Fine.
I don't want to break my word to him. So. Okay, uh, fifteen, the applicant is required to complete all landscaping and all offsite improvements, including but not limited to sidewalk and curb work shown on the site plan prior to obtaining a final certificate of occupancy. Final scope of work and design of all offsite improvements, including but not limited to sidewalk and curb work shown on the site plan shall be approved by the town engineer to ensure the project will dovetail with the planned and vision Wakefield downtown rewrite revitalization project and the planned rail to trail project.
Okay.
Okay. And then the final one is the bonding. In the event the building is completing during a time of year, the landscaping indoor offsite improvements cannot be installed because of weather conditions and prior to the issues of this final certificate of occupancy, the board may require the posting of surety by the applicant with a bond, uh, with the board, uh, with the board and an amount to be determined by the board and the town engineer to assure that the landscaping indoor offsite improvements will be completed when the weather allows. That's it.
Um, Brian, do we want to add? I don't know if this is where we would add it, but conditions about, um, construction with the school hours and things like that.
Top to the board.
I personally would like to. I don't know about the rest of you guys. What do you think?
Then the location kind of demands it.
I agree.
I think they should present a construction schedule with that stuff on it and then they have to adhere to it.
You're talking about deliveries and construction hours because.
Is there steel?
Yeah, the time today that all that stuff's going to be happening. You have kids walking to school and walking home from school.
Police detail.
Yeah.
We don't, well, I, we don't normally condition like weather police details and, you know, like North Ave. They work with the police and the DBW to put up temporary scaffolding and sidewalks and we didn't condition any of that.
Yes, we did. Stuff closer to schools.
Yes, we certainly did. That they worked with the police to do it.
Oh, so maybe it's working with them to ensure, okay, but.
And we set the times for delivery and all that stuff.
Right.
But that was done, Dave, I think through a construction schedule.
Okay.
It wasn't in the order of condition?
It was in order of conditions to meet the construction schedule and work with the police and other appropriate town officials to ensure the safety in the area.
Construction management plan.
Yeah.
And did we limit deliveries? Seven to nine, four to, uh, two to four, something like.
I would go back, I would go back to whatever we did for North Ave. I would just be very similar to North Ave's condition. I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel.
Would it be more Lawton's?
Yeah, I'd say Lawton's building is probably a better.
Bennett didn't have it. I just looked, but that was.
Bennett was too far, Bennett was, you know, had all that space in front.
Yep.
Well, I'm going to have a quarter of an acre next to this bank building where there's plenty of space for these just pulling in and come out of. So you might want to keep it in mind. It's only, this is a twenty-five hundred square foot, uh, building. I've seen houses in this town going up for more square footage. Probably not too far from grammar schools, elementary schools and other places. Very wide street, but.
Yeah, no, I think just with, with delivery schedules, things like that. I think if we just limit a couple of hours during the day, um, when the kids are walking by, I think that's, for me anyway, that's going to be important.
So look at Ray Lawrence.
I got it right here. Just out of curiosity. I, I just opened it.
Yeah, I want to say it was seven to nine and maybe two to four, so.
Okay, I'm going to just copy and paste it and bring it over.
Isn't seven to nine and two to four exactly when you don't want it to be there?
Yeah, that's what we're saying. We won't allow, um.
Okay.
What you just saw there, what was Lawton's? What you just saw there, what was Lawton's? Can you see that?
It's a little small on my screen. What does it say? Does it say six to nine?
There you go.
Okay, oh, six to nine thirty and two to six.
So I think this would not be for the commercial space, right? So it'd just be for the, for the construction of the project.
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
And, and I just might say. You know, per trucks on Main Street, quite frankly, if they can pull off into that empty lot and get unloaded, I don't see what problem that is.
Yeah, but you might be going down a slippery slope right there.
Well, I mean, the way, the way it was handled with Lawton, if a truck is on, if a truck is on site bef, is off the street before that delivery, you know, they're fine. It's more, yeah. So if, if a truck shows up at five thirty in the morning, they can be there during those hours as long as they're not, you know, blocking on the street. They had no staging area, they, that's the difference. We have a bit of a staging area, it's just more the, the traffic and turning and entering onto the site. At certain hours, a lot of foot traffic with the schools.
Right, and a lot of cars park on Richardson, right, at this property and before the fences went up, that's where a lot of parents parks. To meet their kids. So I know, I know that that's a very busy, busy area.
Brian, you said some wording issues in number seventeen. Maybe not be made.
Oh. Thank you. It's amazing when you, I could look at that all night and not see it.
Feels like we have been.
Yep.
So North Ave was a little different and it may be. Better. Or maybe more applicable. Do you want me to show that or Brian, do you have it?
Uh, do you have it, Dave?
I do.
Oh, I don't have it, so you're probably quicker.
Can you see my screen? Number thirteen here.
Yeah, that was for the businesses.
Oh, businesses, all right, so during construction. Is that what we were thinking of then?
Yeah.
Not during construction, but the businesses, deliveries.
Yeah, I mean, the only, the only deliveries that they would be getting would be Brink's. Or whoever their, their money handler is, but. Oh, actually also though shredded or whoever they have for that is going to be. Yeah, maybe I think we might, we should put something else down for that as well.
But aren't both of those things going to be on site?
No, they'd be parked right out in front of the building. Right on Main Street.
Just parking there allowed?
I mean, I especially don't think Brink's needs one. It's not like they hang around.
No, but when, when shredded comes. Sometimes the truck could be there for a while, depending on how much stuff they have.
And I actually don't see a condition where we said you got to work with the town and do the thing. Maybe it was in the construction plan.
It was in the construction plan.
Yeah, I was going to say it must be because there's no condition that says.
No, it wasn't a condition, it was a condition to meet the construction plan.
Okay, so anyway, I thought number thirteen maybe. And, uh, but maybe made during hours at the business or provided the delivery can be accommodated in the parking lot. That's what you made me think of, Chip, so. You know, if they can get off the street maybe, but we don't want them parked on Main Street, you know, parked on the sidewalk area, that kind of thing, right, obviously. All right. How do you want to leave that? So I don't mess this up.
I think you can leave it like that. On-street deliveries.
Okay, just like this, Chip?
I would say on-street deliveries related to construction of the project. That would be my opinion, but others may be different.
Are we going to limit it just to construction or are we going to do it to? Once they're built? As well.
And you think it's going to be how to regulate when a Brink's truck is going to show up?
Yeah, I agree, they kind of. I'm just.
I think, I think you just say deliveries need to be made from the park, but they can't park on the street. I mean, if. That's not our issue again. If they park on the street and it's illegal, then ticket them. I don't know, but it's not. We're overstepping.
There is plenty of space in the parking area on the side and.
Yeah, they just don't, they're not going to park in the street.
That sounds fine. On-street deliveries related to construction.
Actually, I think once they put that island. And expand the sidewalk and put the bike trail, it's only going to be room for one vehicle. To travel from the south to the north with my understanding. So no one's going to be able to stop. On Main Street. Without backing everything else up. So they, they're going to have to pull into the parking area somewhere. Because it, it's going to be one lane in each direction.
Right.
To keep people from speeding and so on and so forth, that's what I've been told.
All right, and again, this is limited to just during construction. Nothing about once it's open for business. So, and it might be done before envisioned comes to pass, so.
I'm sure it will be.
Okay, any other conditions? I checked my notes and the main one I had flagged was the, uh. The one around the, the foundation plan, but you noted that.
Yeah, I put a note on there regarding three-street tree commitment.
Yep.
Mr. McCain, I'll, I'll figure out the language with you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Okay. Any other aspects, board members with the conditions, the final plans, the testimony provided this evening? Okay, here none, we'll open it up with public testimony at this time, so if anyone has a comment or question, we'll entertain that at this time. Bronwyn Delavope.
Hi there, uh, Bronwyn Delavope, eight Cyrus Street. Um, yeah, I would wanted to talk a little bit about lighting. I agreed very much with what you had stated before that. Um, I'm concerned that we might have a repeat of the, the Greenwood Medical Building, that the lights are just glaring. All night long over there. Um, so what can be done? I know you talked a lot about dimming the lights and turning them on, turning them off, but are they going to be on all night? The interior lights.
There'll be safety lighting on all night.
Yeah.
Dim.
Dim, okay, um.
As required by code.
Correct.
Okay, all right, um, and the big, big sign on the front of the building is the red part? Is that lit as well? Is that part of the, the sign? No, is it just the name then? Just the name that's lit?
Yeah, it's just the letters in the, in the, in the flame logo.
Okay, okay, good. And I'm sorry if I, I missed, um. Any outdoor building lighting or the lighting for the parking area? Was that, is, is that on a, on a lighting plan?
Yes, it is.
Uh, and has this, has this, thank you, has this board discussed that lighting plan?
Yep.
Hear me?
Yep.
Yeah.
I can tell you, there're basically three lights in the parking lot. One in the north, uh, one in the southern part and one between them.
Okay, and do you know if they're dark skies compliant?
Uh, Tom?
Yes, they would be, they would be shielded and dark sky comply, compliant.
And is that in? Anywhere that's guaranteed?
Plans and specs.
That is in the plans and specs?
Yep.
Okay, um, all right, so we're not going to have any light pollution, any unnecessary light spill from this. Um, it's just that, you know, with, with all this, this new construction. Now's the time to, to prevent that from happening because you, you guys know how tough it is. Uh, to try to go back and fix something once it's already done. And most of the time it doesn't happen. So I just wanted to double check that you guys had, had, uh, uh, done that. And made sure that it, we, we weren't going to be adding to the light trespass and the light pollution, um, in the downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Just scrolling the list, looking for hands, you can raise your hand in the Zoom. Meeting app or you have your video on. Feel free to wave. Seeing no other hands, we will close with the public testimony. So back to the board. There's nothing else, we may be ready to take a vote.
Well, how do we do that with all the landscaping discussion that happened tonight? That they still owe us.
So is it? Is it more than the landscape plan that it's got to be updated?
Not to my knowledge.
We're going to figure out that sign six and seven, right?
We can always retain jurisdiction over signage.
We could, and that's been a typical condition, but yeah.
Well, I think it's sign six, Tom, and I agree that you can eliminate sign six and with the larger, with the sidewalk being moved off of my property. Onto the town property where it should be, there's plenty of land for that other, was it seven? Sign to be on my land and actually behind there. As far as the. Landscaping, Chip, I mean, if you want to take what, um, James Manuel did along Main Street. We'll just extend it on an east-west.
It's not going to work. It's, it's a totally different, you got to get screening up there. The, what he did along Main Street is a little seven inch.
Well, I mean, you could, you could condition it on the fact that we need to submit a new plant, a landscaping plan.
That I would be okay with.
With, you know, that would be to the satisfaction.
By the board.
Approved by the board of one board member, it's up to you.
I'd want it by the, I mean, it's up to the board. I'd be happy to approve it, but, but.
This is up your street, Chip. Time to take one for the team.
Yep, designated board member.
That's great that Greg has time. Bank regulatory, Chip.
This is. Soon to have three children under five.
Yeah, now I guess I, all right, I guess I win. Given that, then let's just make it conditional upon. Review of a landscape plan. For that left-hand side. It's really that left-hand side between lot one and two.
Yeah, right, yeah. Greg, you want us to take the phone number off if we can?
Please.
Yeah, yeah, just to be consistent with our, uh, our application.
Did Greg, did we make somebody take it off their door?
It was everywhere, it was, um.
At Lawton's place.
Yeah, no, that was their signs in their front windows and everything else.
Well, we've.
Chip, help me, isn't it, isn't a telephone number on the door allowed?
I thought we've never allowed the door either. I thought we've never allowed them. Well, not never, tried to not allow them. We, we have.
Signs, certainly.
We've eliminated basically any, um.
Um. Advertisement.
It was a bright view thing, wasn't it?
Uh, website type of stuff.
Well, the website's on there too, so if we go in that direction.
Yeah, I mean, website and telephone numbers is what we.
On, on, on entry doors?
No, on entry doors, I think we've allowed telephone numbers, but not websites. And on, on building signage like freestanding, we don't want any telephone numbers.
Or websites or any of that.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not advertised, right, so that, what we're talking about here is on the, on the entrance door.
Right, then, then either way, it's the.
Take it off?
Or take off, take off at least the, uh, website. I, I, I don't care. I just want to be consistent with what we're doing.
Well, that's why I'm asking about.
Yeah, yeah.
Entry door versus others.
Yeah.
Because I agree with you on consistency.
Yeah.
Unless it's regulatory, given the nature of the bank, I, I made enough of that, so, yeah. Okay, so that stays where the site goes, all right. Anything else? So what, website goes, phone number can stay?
Yes.
Only on the door.
Yeah.
So do we have, um. So you're adding a condition, Brian, that we're going to review the. Landscape plan, right?
Yep.
And then what are the, uh, architectural and site plans revision dates and who are they from?
Okay, hang on a second. Paul's, Paul's, Paul Pinocchio, PGF Associates is the site plan revision date. Paul is three eighteen, right?
At the last.
That's correct.
Last one.
Yeah.
Okay, and architectural.
Um, hold on a second on that, I apologize. Tom, these are the, these are the building elevations, correct? I just want to make sure I have this right because those never changed, right?
Uh, that's correct, Brian.
So these are. DRL architects?
Yes.
And what's the last revision date?
It's original, uh, ten twenty-six twenty. And then you, and you probably want to.
We didn't update signage or anything on these ever?
That, that's the building plan. Those are the elevations of the building, the specific elevations, which Jim always likes. And then we submitted the sign package tonight.
Which we're going to have to deal, we're going to have to deal with the, uh, one ninety dash seventy-seven E one A. Which has to do with the fifty square feet.
We're going to basically say you've made a determination, it's in compliance, right, Jim?
No, because it says, it basically says you can only be fifty square feet.
Well, that's, that's if you, if you, if you determine in this instance that that is a sign. And I thought the board talked about the fact that they kind of didn't want to do that with this. Amy was saying it's just part of the building.
Well, you can, well, like, but I think it ought to be clarified in this that that's clear. So if someone looks back later.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, you want to handle it, but that's, that, that's the fact.
Um, to be consistent, I think. Brian, how I remember hearing it is both Amy and I didn't have a problem with it being read. Because I, we thought it added something to the building. However, to be consistent, I certainly think it's part of their sign.
Okay.
Because I don't want to get into this, to the argument somewhere while you let Sandana have theirs, you know, I think we need to recognize. That it is part of their sign, but we're allowing you to have it.
Okay. Yep. So, so this is Chip, that, this is the sign plan that was submitted with the date of, um, three seventeen twenty-one.
From. Um, do we need to recognize that, Brian? Is it part of the architectural submission or not?
I think you want to recognize this, don't you, Jim? Because it really shows what's happening here.
It's a separate package.
Yeah.
So the special permanent site plan approval is going to have final site plan, final architectural plans. And final sign package.
Yeah, did you reference the landscaping plan?
And eventually a landscape.
Yeah.
Eventually.
And this has to be a little bit modified to get rid of sign number six.
Yeah, but you can do that upon the.
We can do that with the decision, correct. But you've got the site plan from. Pinocchio.
They plan for PJF dated three eighteen twenty-one.
Yeah.
Architectuals, DRL Architects. Architectuals, DRL Architects, ten twenty-six twenty. The final sign package.
From image one, image one.
Image one dated.
Three seventeen twenty-one.
What is it?
Three seventeen, I seventeen, two thousand twenty-one.
And the final landscape plan yet to be submitted.
Correct, but it's three eighteen is the one of record and then we know.
Three eighteen to be updated.
To be updated, finalized, yes.
And what is Emmanuel himself or is he with a firm?
James Emanuel.
Yeah, that's what I saw. Alright. Mister Chairman.
Yeah, one second, just one for the record. It's regular voting members on this. I think everyone's made all the meetings. Alright, so Dave, Jim, Chip, Amy and Joe. And there are three applications, right, Brian?
Yeah.
Special permit and then the thirty-six C and thirty-seven A, so three, three separate votes here. Okay, Chip, whenever you're ready.
Mister Chairman, I move that we grant the special permanent site plan approval pursuant to section one ninety twenty-three and one ninety forty-five of the Wakefield zoning bylaws allowing a drive-in bank as more particularly shown on the final site plan by PGAF associates dated three eighteen twenty-one. The final architectural plans from DRL Architects dated ten twenty-six twenty. The final sign package from image one dated three seventeen twenty-one. And the landscaping plan as of three eighteen by James Emanuel Architect uh to be updated and approved.
That's your motion?
Yes, and I make this motion based on the following findings. The use requested listed in the table and use regulations is requiring a special permit in the district for this application. The requested use is essential and or desirable to the public convenience and welfare. There's a dire need for for, you know, this end of town to be uh redone. The requested use will not create or add to undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. The requested use will not overload any public water drainage or sewer system or any other municipal system for such an extent that the requested use or any developed use in the immediate area or in any other town will be unduly subjected to hazards affecting health, safety and general welfare. The requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining districts nor be detrimental to the public health, convenience and welfare. And the requested use will not by its addition to the neighborhood cause an excess of this particular use that could be detrimental to the character of the neighborhood. Uh, not quite yet. In section one ninety forty-five says the board has always reviewed the section of the bylaw which is pertinent part states that in reviewing a site plan, the special permitting granting authority and the other applications other applicable agencies shall consider among other things to follow. One, convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site. Two, adequacy of the methods of disposal for sewerage, refuse and other waste and methods for surface and stormwater drainage. Three, provisions of off-street loading and unloading of vehicles incidental to servicing of the buildings or related uses on the lot or track. And we have looked at all these three things. We've had the engineering department look at all these three things. And uh we believe that the criteria is satisfied. The conditions are as already presented and discussed and updated as of earlier this evening. That is my motion.
Second.
Mister Chairman, just to point um the date on that plan, and and that was my mistake, on the architectural elevations is actually ten twenty-nine. Okay, I blew it up. I thought it was ten twenty or ten twenty-six, but it's ten twenty-nine, two thousand.
Put it again.
Alright, um, so as amended, uh Amy can, I got a second. Thank you on the amended motion with that updated date. Thank you. Any discussion on that amended motion? Okay, regular voting members, Chip?
Yes.
Amy? Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so that's unanimous.
Mister Chairman, I move that we grant the special permit pursuant to section one ninety dash thirty-seven A of the of the Wakefield zoning bylaw permitting off-street parking areas to be provided on another lot in the same ownership as the principal use as shown on the final site plan and final architecturals and landscape as present as earlier stated, along with the signed findings for the special permits and conditions that we already presented.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Same voting members, Chip?
Yes.
Amy? Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I vote yes. That too is unanimous.
Good. Mister Chairman, I move that we grant the special permit pursuant to section one ninety dash thirty-six C of the Wakefield zoning bylaw reducing the requirements of the standards for off-street parking and loading under Article seven of the bylaw as follows. One, section one ninety dash thirty-seven D of the bylaw allowing the width of the aisles to be as shown on the final site plan. Two, section one ninety dash thirty-seven E one of the bylaw allowing the setback of off-street parking areas to be closer than seven point five feet to the building and allowing the open parking areas to be separated by the street line by a landscape strip less than fifteen feet as shown on the final site plan. And three, any other necessary reductions of the requirements and or standards for off-street parking and loading under Article seven of the bylaw related to the project as shown on the final site plan, final architectural plan and final landscape plan. And we find, and we found this to be applicable of the standards for off-street parking and loading under Article seven proving that it was kind of infeasible and the reductions are supported by evidence of infeasibility due to lack of suitable land design considerations and other similarities and similar factors. The granting of such special permit will not adversely affect the health, safety, convenience, character or welfare of the neighborhood or district of the town. Furthermore, we determine that the location of the structure will not restrict visibility in such a way as to hinder the safe entry or exit of a vehicle from any driveway to the street or restrict visibility at a corner of two streets. The conditions have already been presented. And um, you know, we also listened to TAC and the town engineer, so we very feel very comfortable in this.
Thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Same voting members, Chip?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So that too is unanimous. Okay.
Where do we, where do we cover? One ninety dash seventy-seven.
Well, you can do that as, you know, that's part of the, part of the um site plan approval.
Signage?
You can. Basically, you can separately vote on that, Jim. That's under one ninety.
One ninety seventy-seven. E one A.
Yeah.
And it's only, we're only dealing with signs one and two, uh, two and three, I'm sorry, on this case. It only affects those two signs.
What's the paragraph again, Joe?
One ninety seventy-seven. E. One A.
Which is the square footage, right, Jim?
It has to do with the fifty square foot, yes. And it's only for those two signs, two and three.
And and three feet overall in height too, right, Jim? It's taller than three feet.
Well, yeah, you can.
Is that, if that's what we're.
If you're taking, if you're looking at that way.
Yeah, if we think we need to take the vote, we we need to for the three feet also.
Which is where? I'm trying to find it.
Same, same paragraph, one ninety.
It's all under E one, right?
E one A, yeah.
Oh, and okay, yeah, yeah, it's both aspects, okay. Yep, I think it would be appropriate, Jim.
So within, within, so I make a motion that we allow the signage package, which we have stated in the first special permit and all other special permits to allow uh a variance of one ninety dash seventy-seven E one A to be greater than fifty square feet and uh taller than three feet as shown in the final site plan package for signs two and three.
Thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Same voting members, Chip?
Yes.
Amy? Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Alright. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Good luck with the project, Bob and team.
Thank you, members of the board. Appreciate your assistance and input. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I make a motion for a two-minute recess?
You can. This will be the first on a Zoom meeting.
I know. I got a sleeping kit on my lap.
Second. Alright, there's a second for a uh a a motion to.
Can we just keep moving? She can come back. You gotta go to the next hearing, so.
Do what you gotta do, mute yourself and come on back as soon as you can.
I'll be back in two seconds.
Alright, thank you. Alright, the next hearing, everyone, deep breath. Exhale, okay. Twenty-one dash thirty-seven Crescent Commons Development LLC at forty-four, forty-six and forty-eight Crescent Street. Uh, thank you, Mister Chairman. Just um shifting gears here for a minute. Okay. Thank you, Mister Chairman, uh members of the board, uh for the record, attorney Brian McGrail representing uh the applicant Crescent Commons Development LLC. Hang on a second. Apologize, I just lost my Zoom link here. There we go. Uh, representing Crescent Comet LLC regarding to the uh national laws, chapter forty B application for properties at forty-four, forty-six and forty-eight Crescent Street in Wakefield. With us tonight, uh Peter Sandors, who's our architect, Rick Salvo, who is our site uh civil, Rick has already, I think, uh kind of uh loaded some stuff up on the screen. Um, and also, uh, the Bichelis are here also, um, who are the principals of the applicant. Uh, Joe is the main principal and Steve is the manager of the um entity. We have, as you are aware, um, we had our initial hearing on this and it was decided by the board to appoint the subcommittee uh comprised of Mister McBane uh and Miss Wall um to um try to do some revisions uh to the architectural plans. The board was concerned with the massing and density of the site um in in how the building fit in. So you designated uh both of them to work um with our architect uh an engineer uh to see what could be done as far as making some revisions to the project uh to hopefully satisfy some of the uh issues and concerns that were raised by the board uh at the initial hearing. So uh since that time, we've had uh two um working sessions with the subcommittee. Um, they were posted, they were open to the public and some uh members of the public did view uh those which they were, had the opportunity to do so. Um, I think we've made some um good headway and and Peter, Peter and Rick will talk a little bit about that tonight. I'm sure you'll hear from your subcommittee members, but to kind of give you some concise um uh points on what's what we've done in those two working sessions, what modi, what the modifications have resulted in. We've actually have reduced the unit count from the original proposed fifty-six units down to forty-five units. So we've reduced the the project by eleven units. Uh, we've also decreased the two-bedroom count by ten units from twenty to ten. So we're adding more one-bedroom units, uh now twenty-seven units. We we've had to hold the three-bedroom units because they're required by uh the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as part of the forty B process. Uh, we have stepped down the building. We've stepped the building down on Crescent Street from four stories to three stories. And um we've actually dropped the height of the building by twenty-five feet vertically. Um, in certain aspects, removing an entire floor of the building. We've removed some gable roof areas in the building, dropped it to two and a half stories. So I I think we've, we've um come a long way. I appreciate the efforts of the of the subcommittee and uh Mister Sandors. We've also uh as part of this, one of the concerns the board had in the traffic advisory committee had was a a lack of parking. So now, um, what we've been able to do with these changes, um, we've um actually been able to meet the parking requirements. So the required parking was reduced from eighty-seven spaces to seventy spaces due to the unit reduction. And the proposed parking has now been increased from sixty-seven proposed spaces to seventy um to meet uh the parking requirements as far as parking count goes. So I think um that the work uh with the subcommittee has been productive. And I'm sure that uh the board is anxious to see some details in that regard. So if I may, I think I'll hand it over to uh Peter and Rick to work in unison to kind of present uh the changes that were were um have that have evolved.
Sounds good. Thank you, Brian.
Rick, should I go first? You have this, the slide up of the uh the main level of the building. Uh, I think some important things to note here is that we've um taken the whole back area of the park, what was parking, that we're gonna put four garden-style units there, which helped me bring the whole back of the building down a story. And actually, that area of the building is the same height as its neighbor uh to the rear. Uh, the front of the building, we maintained parking, we maintained um the lobby, the connection to the whole building. But you can see at the front, the line of the front facade, the front elevation undulates in and out so that it breaks that facade horizontally and vertically. I've also added a a front porch to the building, which allows me to have handicapped ac- access um to the front door and also um perform with the roofline makes a vertical break. If you can go to the next slide, Rick. So here is a uh the upper floor showing how the units are now um dispersed throughout the building. I think the thing to see here is that the facade, there there's almost no areas of the building have straight facade lines anymore. Everything's uh broken horizontally in the building. Um, to the next level. Uh, again, unit counts have been changed and added. There is still in process. I've done a lot of work with uh removing um many of the balconies that were there because they didn't work in the architecture anymore. Um, and some of this is still in process where uh we've seen that sometimes we've done some changes in plans that have not reflected elevation, but it's ongoing. Uh, next slide, Rick. This is the upper floor. You can see the whole um back of the building uh is below there. Um, the owners uh have talked about having an amenity on the building, but we'll do a suppressed rooftop uh terrace in that area. That'll be hidden in the mansard. Uh, we talked about maybe having some amenities, uh maybe gardens if we can. Um, and and I believe most of that'll be hidden. Um, we we still have to develop it, but we have that happening. We also have a terrace out towards the front, one of the front units on the right. Mu- uh much less uh density on on this floor. You go to the next uh slide, Rick. Uh, you can take it now.
Real quick. Um, the parking scheme is still an upper and lower level parking uh configuration with the upper level parking is accessed off of Crescent Hill Street. You might recall there used to be parking back here that extended out into this landscaped area. All that's been removed, so this part of the building could be lowered. The result is. The result is twenty-seven parking spaces on the, on the top, top level. Three accessible spaces, twenty-four standard nine-by-eighteen spaces. This is up at about elevation one fourteen. This driveway was to drive down to about elevation one twelve to access the lower-level parking. We have two exterior spaces here. And then the lower level is comprised of forty-one spaces. Twenty of them, nine-by-eighteen spaces, twenty-one of them are eight and a half by eighteen spaces. That's about thirty percent of them. So that's the way the parking and access will work out. So we jump back into the architecture to the elevations.
So here we're seeing, we took some time to spend some time on Crescent Street looking at the buildings that are there now, the homes that are there now, buildings down the street. Decided to go with a very traditional mansard slope roof for the upper floors using A dormers and again breaking that whole upper level in terms of height. I'm going to show you comparison later, but this Crescent Street facade is a twenty-five-foot drop on the left-hand side. On the right-hand side, it's even more. One whole floor missing. And when you go to the right where the building steps down, it's two and a half stories of building that are no longer there. That's also because the gable is gone. The next elevation is the Crescent Hill elevation, I believe. You can see the building in the back now is sitting on grade. Those are the garden-style units in the back. The front units are still elevated for parking at that upper level. But trying to break the facade into segments, the Crescent Street elevation is broken into seven segments. The Crescent Hill elevation is broken into five. Go to the next slide, Rick. So here we're seeing the rear elevation and also the the right, I believe. Again, showing the stepping down of the building both towards the right on Crescent Street and also in the rear. Adding some windows in the, in the parking area to look like it's, it's living areas, but it's parking. And, and hoping that we can suppress that upper deck that happens between the upper level and the lower back level into the roofline into that lower hip that happens in the, in the mansard. Next slide, Rick. So here I show you where the building was initially. That's the Crescent Street and where it is now. And I think you can easily see that it's been drastically reduced from what it was, both the number of units, of course, but also the height. Also that it's not a straight facade anymore. It's, it's broken back and forth. Same thing happens in the, the next elevation. And then this, I think, is very telling here. We superimposed the new elevation on Crescent Street with the old elevation behind. And just seeing how the magnitude of the building has changed drastically. Hope you see that and feel that the architecture is now much more in keeping with the residential buildings that are there now, both in height, width, and shape. I believe that's what we have.
Okay. Jim or Amy, do you want to add anything just from your, the subcommittee meetings? Again, just to add to what they've already presented? Or just you think they kind of covered the gist of what you want?
Just globally for a moment, basically. One of the things that Peter sort of mentioned it, try to break this down into three different pods. Have it more, have more, bring more texture to it. Basically, but also have it step down the hill and step into the hill. So the building behind, basically, that's behind this with the garden state units. We cut that back by a floor and then they basically decide they didn't need the parking, so they put the floor back on. But my intent was basically to reduce it coming into the uphill side, which they, we did. There's only, there's only one piece at this point that, Peter, can you move back to the fourth floor?
If you could, Rick, go to the fourth floor. We're just trying to look at the fourth floor, Rick, if you could go back.
Sorry.
That's okay. He just the fourth floor.
Yeah, so the only component piece that, that I have an issue with now, within this design concept, basically, are the top two units to the right. There are two units there. I'd like to not have that because I think it steps down. It shows more of a step down to the neighborhood and not have those two units. And I've suggested to the design team that if they have a problem with losing two units, to find a way to mix it in with the rest of the units that are already there. So I, I want to see that roof entirely open from front to back on that right side. So that it truly looks like it steps down and not just the front piece, but the back piece, because when you are on the right-hand side and you're in the neighborhood on that side, it just adds another floor to that, that side, basically. So it doesn't really respect the intent here. That's about it.
Okay, thanks, Kim. I don't know if Amy's back, but any other comments, questions, board members?
Yeah, Peter, can you go to the last photo?
The, the.
Yeah, so why did we lose the windows at the very bottom right-hand corner? Is that garage space now or?
That is garage space at the bottom right-hand corner, yes.
All right, is that gonna be some kind of like a dead zone or?
We've been wondering whether we would come back in with brick or stone. I don't think we've made that decision yet. Something in landscaping in front as well.
Okay, yeah.
Joe, I think I see this as, this is, you know, we've had two meetings. This is where we are. There's more meetings to come. And in, in some of those meetings, like you, like you see here, there, there were some superimposed windows potentially like we did on Salem Street in six-ten and the like. So I, I think we need to look at this, you know, as we move forward. But by bringing this for, bringing this particular concept forward, at least we're looking for a reaction.
Yeah.
Items and certainly we're aware of what you're talking about.
Yeah, don't get me wrong, it's a huge change. I mean, I love it.
Excuse me, Jim, can you, those two units you were talking about, do they show up in this? I guess if you went back to the kind of the ghost building there.
The Crescent Street elevation should show them.
They don't. They don't. They would be going all the way across to the side. You can because like Peter said originally, basically, sometimes the elevations and the plans don't quite reflect.
Yeah.
The plan at the bottom that's being shown right now on the, it says right elevation.
Yeah.
It does reflect that section. What it doesn't, and it reflects in the one above where, where the, that fourth floor goes all the way across.
Yeah.
In the background.
Yeah.
But on the front, it doesn't show that in the front elevation. If we can move to that.
Can you go back to Crescent Street, Rick? Here they go.
See, at the top, that roofline would go all the way to the right side, and it doesn't.
Here, this roof.
This is, this reflects more what I want to see.
Yeah.
That the building doesn't exist in that location.
Right there, yeah.
Thanks, Jim.
So, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes, Greg.
I think my, my reaction is, yes, a lot has been done on design and I appreciate the work that has been done. But I think the major concerns for me in this area would be more related to, and this is unfortunately what we'll have to get into later, so I don't know if anything can be decided. Not, well, not decided, but put to bed at this point is, is the safety and kind of those issues dealing with the other neighbors. You know, there still is, yeah, we've gone down a lot in unit count, but we're still talking about seventy parking spaces, forty-five units, I think we said. Putting a lot of load in this area of, of, of town, especially on a small street like Crescent Hill. Getting especially fire equipment up and down that street, just, just really large safety issues that no matter how far we go in design, I don't think can even be addressed until we get to you know, more traffic study. So I, I guess I'd like to hear more of, is this, Jim and Amy, I guess, why are we, are we settled, I guess, on this is, there is no further negotiation on unit count? Because to me, that's still a lot of units, still a lot of added traffic that really raised some pretty heavy safety issues and health issues for that area of town, especially the Crescent Hill area. You know, it's a narrow street anyways. And in addition, honestly, one of my, my first takes on this is, you know, internal fire too. How, how are they gonna enter, you know, the garage and fight a fire all the way to the back? And those units that are garden-style all the way in the back. I guess that's more code issues, but that's, that's kind of my reaction to this. I like where the direction it's going, but I think more of the health and safety is really what's continuing to concern me.
This was why we wanted to bring it to you guys now, just so to get your feedback. We've been, you know, working obviously with the team to try to get the numbers reduced and the size brought down. I think both Jim and I agree that there's still more work to be done, but we wanted to bring it to you guys to see if we were heading in the right direction, what we were saying with those two units that Jim wants to bring down more. It sounds like the, the, the team doesn't want to, or they, in their mind, they can't lose two more units. They're kind of at their point. And maybe they can speak more to that than I can, but just wanted to get a feel from you guys to see what you think. Jim, I don't know if you want to add to that.
No, I, I know you, you're absolutely correct. I mean, we had two meetings. We decided basically not to have Peter make it perfect. Like he said, some of the elevations don't quite match the, the plans, but the textures there. So we need to hear about what the rest of, you know, we've, we've basically taken care of some of the questions, particularly parking. And we've reduced the units, the unit count. So within the design con, with this design concept, so we really need to hear from the rest of the members here as to, okay, we're at this point, now where do we go? Now, if it's, if it's a traffic issue, should we be waiting for a traffic report to find out what that is and like? I mean, the big concern starting out on this was they were short like, I don't know, twenty, twenty parking spaces? Well, now they've got the parking spaces. So parking is less of an issue. It's never going to be not an issue, but it's less of an issue than it was when they presented the first project. So, you know, traffic, we, we're not traffic experts and certainly the neighborhood basically has concerns because they already have problems with parking issues on their own street. And if you look at the units across the street, just up the street a bit, they don't hardly have any parking. And they're parking on the street, so they're already crowded in the area, I'm sure. So I guess we, Amy and I need to hear back as to what you guys think. Basically, maybe, you know, the textures looks great, but, you know, there's these other issues. We didn't want to get into colors or tones or anything like that. We want to stay in this sort of loose method, basically, at this point.
So Dave, it's Tom.
Yep.
I, I agree with Greg. You know, I appreciate everything that's been done, but for me, it's still too many units on this site. Terms of the massing, it's too much. And the parking would get better if there were less units. I mean, if you still had the seventy spaces and at least the two less that Jim's talking about, I would like to see less units than that. Then the seventy, I think, would be more acceptable. I know it meets the bylaw right now, but I still, given where it's located, I think it's parking is going to be a major problem. Worry about, as Greg said, for future safety traffic, we can get into that later. But I kind of like what Jim's done. There's a little bit of cynic in me that says they presented a kind of a big box with a bunch of units, knowing that we weren't gonna be very happy with it. And you know, played a little bit of a game there, knowing that we're gonna want to see units reduced and but I'll try to get over my cynicism, but I think you're going in the right direction, Jim and Amy, and I appreciate your efforts, but I'd like to see more, less units. And then, you know, refine what you've done. I like the way you've broken down the building in terms of horizontally and vertically, making some elements in there, so it doesn't, at least breaks down the massing, but it'd be great if there were less mass and less units.
I think we're kind of all on the same page about that.
Yep. Now, the, the original fire department's letter didn't mention, I mean, they mentioned parking, which has gotten better, as we heard. Or the lack of parking at the, in that original plan, which has gotten better in the current one. And the TAC report also mentioned it as well. But they also mentioned concerns with on-stream parking, accessibility to Crescent Hill, overall congestion. Ladder truck being able to respond to the area and response times. Closeness to the public safety building. Sightlines for police vehicles and fire apparatus. So there's concerns there, but I, you know.
So, so Dave, can I ask, what, one of my biggest concerns, I think, is access to the area. What specifically do they actually say about? They say we're concerned about it, because if they just say we're concerned about it, I think we need either a more detailed letter or someone to come and talk to us. Because I don't know how, I mean, how we can just move forward and say, oh, they're concerned about it. We contemplated it and that's it.
Right, they had recommendations, but it was more about, you know, if the project would move forward, stop signals and ADA compliant wheelchair ramps and maybe some more site measurements, some more field measurements. I think they're recommending a little bit more detail in terms of a follow-on traffic study, right?
Okay, before they make recommendations, that is.
Right, but they're saying they have concerns, but I would agree. We may, we need a deeper discussion or additional detail, like, okay, we're all concerned, but how does it get addressed?
Yeah, yeah, and I, I mean, I, I could be wrong, but I would like to hear from who I would think are the, you know, fire department movement experts of the fire department. And even if there are cars on either side of the street, we will be able to turn to get, or we won't be able to turn to get up the street. We can get every piece of equipment to the back corner of this now garden unit apartments that we need to, to attack a fire there. Yeah, I mean, honestly, my major concerns are essentially safety rather than design at this point.
Right, we can certainly ask, I mean, we have in the past, certainly the, the TAC rep, VHB rep to attend a meeting and we can discuss some of their concerns and, and, you know. But we could also invite the fire.
Yeah, that was representative question.
Again, around public safety or and, and their ability to maneuver around this, this site, whether there would need to be more space in the drive areas or something, some, some.
Or, or even getting up Crescent Hill too, it's really.
Right.
You know, if you're trying to, if there's a, you know, fire at the last house on the street. Can they access it?
Yep.
The, the building will end up being fully sprinkled, but that still doesn't say how they would attack the fire. Obviously, Crescent Hill and Crescent Street would be the attack area, but putting a truck, say, in the driveway to the right puts their vehicles at, at risk. And I don't think they, they put a hundred thousand dollar or more two-hundred thousand dollar vehicle in there to fight a fire at the back end. So they totally have to depend on the sprinkle system to basically control the fire.
Yeah, and I, I think less of my concern is this building than the other people on the street. Yeah, and I I I think less of my concern is this building than the other people on the street who don't have the benefit of sprinklers, because they're not building. A new, brand new building.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, in terms of, I. Tend to agree with with the previous comments again, and I think this site presents some unique challenges, given its location. The narrowness of the street, the the elevation changes. Right, um. On this hill and the sightlines that it creates, um. And then how it's presented on on the site. I I agree, it's still too many units for me. It's too big of a building. Um, for this location. Even if it meets the 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 parking code, I. I still need to better understand that the safety aspects. From from traffic, safety to, yeah, um, first responder kind of safety. So we may need them at the next hearing, or if there's going to be ongoing subcommittee hearings, then the next time it gets brought back here. We we plan for that and schedule and ask them to attend. So we can maybe get into a little deeper conversation there. Anyone else want to add anything? And that was all the new material, right, Brian, tonight? We went through everything that was, I think I have in my file, okay?
I I guess my only other comment is very quick, because it's it's different, but way less minor than safety is. Do we really want, I mean, that that, I know suppressed balcony, but if they're going to be seeing into other people's homes who are. On the same level, then that doesn't need to be there. That's small comment compared to everything else, but.
Right, perhaps a nice amenity for the residents, but not so much for the butters, right? Right. Okay. Anything else, board members? All right, so um, I will look up the public testimony, I have, we have received two letters from Butters, I believe, um. So if they're here, they can. Make the statements on their own. If they choose not to, I can read their letters into the record. Um, on their behalf, but I will open it up first, um, for them or anyone else that uh. Wants to speak and we'll go from there. So I see Jerry and Tina Perrin. Just please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Tina Perrin, um, I live at seven Crescent Hill Wakefield, Mass.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you all for staying up so late for this. We really appreciate it. Um, I did have a few things I wanted to say tonight. I wanted to use all to hear. Uh, like I said, I live at seven Crescent Hill. My street is very tiny. The fire department already has a tough time getting up the street, and there's no turning around. They have to back down the street, putting this building here would just make that worse. Um, also, I have the joy of living up the street from Steven right now, and I don't know him personally, but. I have seen many people come and go from that house, and right now, one of my concerns is the parking again. I mean, he's got. This apartment down there with three parking spaces for his tenants, but yet they're illegally parked and the no parking on the corner. They're illegally hanging out of his driveway on the sidewalk and into the street right now. Like, he can't maintain this one of house. How is he gonna maintain this building of this monstrosity? Another concern with this is trash. I mean, right now, he's got barrels and barrels of trash out there. It's trash night. It's not out, and there's trash overflowing onto the ground, as is every week. It blows all up the street, all into our yards. We end up cleaning up his trash. Like, how is he going to maintain an apartment building of that size if he cannot maintain this one house? To me, it's just unbelievable. Um, and he's proposing seventy parking spots for a forty-six unit building. How many of those spots are going for maintenance people? How many for staff? How many are for deliveries for visitors? Like, how is that nearly enough for this area? Like, you already said, there's no parking on Crescent Street. There's like eight spots and houses depend on it. There's nothing on Crescent Hill. We have five spots here, and we have eight houses here with multiple cars. There's nothing on Water Street. There's nothing on. Any of the streets in this area, like, there's no room for overflow. You cannot fit a wooden peg into a circle, like, it just doesn't fit. And also, um, if you look on the proposed fourth floor. It says that there's one two-bedroom apartment, but if you count them, there's actually three two-bedroom apartments on that page. I just think in closing that this is an abuse of the forty B law, and we have to do something to stop this. I really appreciate your help, and Greg and Thomas, I feel like you heard us, and I really appreciate you mentioning these concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perrin.
Want to say something? Because I'll lock your hand up here.
Okay. I see Angelo.
Good evening and thank you again, board members, uh, for your time this evening. Last hearing, I brought up the.
Sorry, excuse me, sir, can you just state your name and address again for the?
Sorry, yes, Angelo Salamoni, forty Crescent.
Thank you.
At the last meeting, I brought up height, and I'm curious, we saw.
Oh, sorry, I gotta find the mute button there. Keep going, please.
Sure, a few slides back, we saw a comparison between the original proposal height. And the now new proposed height. I'm wondering if we have anything that shows how those both compare to the existing structures.
Believe we have that yet, but we do know that. The rear portion of the building. The height, yes, that area, the height of that top of ridge is equal to the house directly next to it on the left. We haven't, no, we haven't compared it with all the things on the street yet. We will, but we haven't.
Perhaps it's something we could look at next time.
Yes.
Okay.
Mister Chairman.
Yes.
Is it possible to ask people that are speaking to share their video? I feel like they're, unless they don't have it. Okay.
There we go, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, and I do also just want to echo the last commenter's concerns about current. Conditions on the existing properties, since we have. Proposals from the from the same landowners, um, to expand their operation. Frankly, I I pick up a lot of recycling. I'm I'm not looking to more with more people.
Okay, thank you. Sue Mitchell.
Actually, Mark Mitchell, uh, fourteen Crescent Hill.
Okay.
He's a little better looking than I.
Well, I just went by the name in the meeting.
Um, so, uh, I just wanted to, um, reiterate, um, what I said the last time and what I've sent to you in letters. Um, you know, I'm really having a tough time. Giving any support to this project, uh, mostly because of mass. Um, I think it's totally inappropriate for a general residence-owned area. Um, I might be mistaken, but if this wasn't forty B, I don't think we'd be here talking about it. Um, so, um, you know, to hear from Mister McGrail, the last meeting, we're exempt, we're exempt, we're exempt from. All of the downtown slugs was, you know, kind of discouraging to hear all that and to see a fifty-six unit. You know. Pushed down on us, so you know, stuffing sixty pounds into a ten-pound bag. Well, now we got it down to fifty pounds. And, uh, you know, still isn't doing much. Um, so, yeah, definitely not going to get a lot of support from the. Neighborhood here for for this project. The other, I guess, I got another question about, um, the subcommittee. You know, it's it's good that we were able to observe, which I did the last one and not the first one, but is this something that is a a common practice?
We have. We have done it, um, a couple of times on large forty Bs, which of this nature.
Okay.
It's not common.
And and it's because of forty B, because it's of the of the.
I I don't know that it's necessarily forty B, maybe that's just how it's played out, given the scope of. Uh, the the projects, um. The size, you know, like Terrant Lane was one that was multiple buildings and a lot of units and.
And do we think the subcommittee will go through the whole project and? Assist them in that and the whole time?
To be determined. I mean, I think historically, it's been primarily around the. This initial sort of architecture massing kind of getting to a point that. We can all feel comfortable enough to move forward, but usually the other aspects landscaping, and once we get into some of those other details. Usually those can be vetted in in the public hearing with everybody here, without a lot of extra time. It's just the time taking to. Do the things that they're doing. We would be here till midnight, one AM. Every time with other applications, so it's just to help make things more, a little more efficient. But they are public, and then they bring back, as you heard tonight, their findings, so.
Um, I guess my next question, it may not be for. You to, you you may not be able to be the one that this, but, um. Who from the town? Actually interacts with the state. When it comes to this forty B, you know, how do, you know, not being familiar with the process at all, how are we? You know, we're seeing all of these proposals, we're seeing all this, we've heard from Mister McGrail that, you know, uh, they. Because of forty B, we can be. We have to, you know, bypass a lot of those zoning bylaws and so forth. How do, how how was the interaction with the state on this?
So I I I can perhaps partially answer, but I don't know if Brian perhaps could add add to it. So our, when we had a town planner, Paul Revis, um. Part of his charge was keeping track of our housing inventory, and he did the master, worked on the master plan and kind of the vision for the town. But then also tracked housing developments, both single family and all these multifamilies and forty Bs. And communicated with the the town, uh, with the state. On um, inventories and census data and sort of keeping up, uh, reporting what what's being developed and then uh, getting information back. And kind of helping us keep track of kind of where we stood. I'm sure there's more more involved in that, but that, you know, among just for forty Bs, that that's some of it. Um, in terms of other people, well, now Paul's retired, um, we have, uh, the town has hired, um. Erin. Kokinda is a economic and business development, and I think one of her charges is to kind of pick up some of what Paul used to do. And I've seen some updated information from her applying for some information and working with the state. In that regard, I don't know who else from the town might have some. Responsibility here or communication around forty Bs in particular. Brian, do you do you happen to know if there's any other? Town representative involved?
Uh, I don't, Mister Chair.
Okay.
Okay, um, I guess, and I guess my next one would be, you know, kind of along those lines, um, would. Someone from this board or somewhere else be willing to, uh, work with the neighbors? Uh, all of us with our concerns and to, so that we have a little. You know, upfront. Help on this before, uh, before we get to these to these sessions.
Um, unfortunately, I don't I don't know that there is a way to really do that, um. That's what these hearings are for, and that's what this public participation aspect is for.
Okay, no, I I understand that. I just, it just seems that, um. You know, the developer here is is getting. A subcommittee to help work with him and work with him, and we have to sit back and wait, 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 and 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 not being experienced or really, you know, being late person here. I don't, you know, this is the first time I've ever. Had to go through something like this, and it's, uh, you know, um, again, it's, uh. Not something that we support at all.
Understood. I mean, in in the public is. Can attend those subcommittee hearings, but again, they are intended to be a working session. So that's why there's no public participation. They're just trying to work out the details, but you can attend and listen and. At least take notes and then bring them here if you heard something or want to raise a question, then this is the forum to do that, so.
And Mister Chair, could I address something real quick?
Oh, one at a time, Greg, you got it.
The the subcommittee, and I've heard this a few times now, so I think it's a little bit of a misunderstanding on the subcommittee's role. The subcommittee isn't formed to help the developer at all. That's not. The 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 plan, the 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 subcommittee is formed so it isn't. We don't like your plan. They go back, they come back yet again. We don't like your plan. They go back and just extends this process for everybody involved. The subcommittee is more formed to say. Yeah, maybe the board will like this, give them some direction that maybe we like, or no, they won't like this at all. Uh, so we don't have to keep going back and forth. So there is no help, and I've heard that from a few people. So that's not what the what the role of some committee is at all.
It really wasn't what I was inferring, but, you know, thank you for that.
The other thing I might add, just about forty Bs is. You know, it's a, this is a negotiation, um. Forty Bs were set up by the state to get affordable housing into towns that don't have enough. They're then given. Leeway. To get rid of most zoning requirements in a given property or a given site. You don't want. This is a negotiation. We have to be very careful of how we proceed. We can't just turn them down because we don't like the project. That's not how this whole thing works. It's. Very, very different, and you made the statement earlier, Mister Mitchell, that. You know, if if it wasn't for forty B, we wouldn't be here with this project, and, you know, that's a true statement. But we also have to be very careful, because we turn them down, you get the first design. And you get fifty-six units. This is a negotiation. We're all here trying to get. This massing reduced, trying to get the parking under control, trying to understand the traffic. But I have to tell you, you're gonna get something. Whether I like it, you like it. Or not, if we, if and if we're not careful, and I don't mean this to be on the side of the developer or not. And and we do something that we can't do. Within the role of forty B. They go back to mass housing. Mass housing says you can put up fifty-six units. Feel free, go ahead. This is a negotiation. This is a a a way we try. To represent you as the neighbors, hear your concerns and do whatever we can. To react to those in the best way we can. I I don't know. That's kind, you know, unfortunately. Forty Bs don't really. Consider the neighbors very well, so we have to take your consideration. And try to negotiate and work with the the developer as much as possible. To get things to scale that makes sense. That's what we try to do.
Okay, appreciate that. Thank you, Chip.
And I would add, Chip, um, it's a good point you raised, um. Again, there are very few criteria under which. A town could say no. The one that everyone seems to be. Familiar with is the ten percent. When we got to ten percent of our affordable housing. We could reject the project. There are a couple other criteria that are very specific, um, that I don't think we'd be even closer to, um. Um, but the the safety one potentially is one, if we just felt that just. There were safety issues, public safety issues that we thought could not be remediated. It might be something there, but, um, but if we couldn't find something that would hold up under appeal at that housing. Level. Um, it would get overturned, and and we, as Chip said, we would get. We would all get something that we may not like any better. It might be worse than what we're seeing today. Um, but working with the developer and trying to negotiate something. We hopefully end up with something that mi- minimizes the overall impact to the area and the town, and also gives. Um, us some conditions under which we have some control over the development. And how it's managed and the operations. Trash and snow removal and all these things. If they did it on appeal and we had no control over it, they could do whatever they want essentially. Within the rights of the law and town ordinances, but we would have very little or no control over it, so. It's in our best interest to work with them as much as we can to try to make this work. Um, as best we can. So as Chip said, it's a, it's a, it's it's a negotiation.
Okay, great, no, excellent. Thank you for that help.
Okay, Rebecca Sweat.
Hi, uh, thanks, board members, for your time. I'm Rebecca Sweat, over. With forty Crescent. Um, I just wanted to echo like something that you mentioned, the the operational aspect of it. As Tina mentioned earlier, there is a pretty significant problem with clearing garbage, maintaining the property. Um, and I wanted to bring up something else that, um, just the same same sort of sentiment, like. If there is going to be a project that goes in there, I'm I'm a gimby, I'm all for affordable housing. But I would want it to be well cared for. Currently, we have rats everywhere. There are a significant number of rat trails out from underneath the the decks. Across the street. Um, and in speaking with one of my neighbors, who is a very lovely guy, he hasn't had hot water in days. And he has not been able to get into contact with anybody to get it fixed. So, um, just. If there's gonna be a property there, whether or not everybody likes it, I just want it to be well cared for and something that I'm comfortable living across the street from, you know? Thank you.
Thank you for that. Katie. Kaluga? Kaluga, did I get that right?
Yes, Kalaga.
Kalaga, thank you, sorry.
Hi, thank you very much. Um, we really appreciate you hearing our feedback and. Trying to incorporate that into the plans. I did send a letter out, and I know that I've heard from a few folks in response to my letter. I did send a letter out, and I know that I've heard from a few folks in response to my letter and, um. You know, I'm, I'm not gonna read it now because it will bring me to tears, um, but I, what I will tell you is, you know, I will echo the same things. That have already been said, we found one of the dead rats on our driveway, we see the rats, um, we see the trash, it's a huge problem. The parking is an issue, I have pictures of the illegal parking. I'm specifically concerned about my home being accessed by emergency vehicles. Our street is not a cul-de-sac, it's a dead end street, um, please come visit us, I, I welcome you to come. Sit on my porch and we have some rocking chairs there, you can enjoy yourself there and me and my children. We're concerned about fire and a risk of emergency vehicles being able to get to us. We live in a home that was built in eighteen eighty, we obviously do not have a sprinkler system, it's all wood. Um, I really appreciate your support and you working with. The developer and attorney to, to minimize the impact to us in our neighborhood. I will read the last sentence of the letter that I wrote, which is this proposed development has completely shaken our lives. I plan to move out of the neighborhood, um, my husband and I do not want to continue to live here after this happens. There's no inventory in Wakefield, there's no place for us to move to, so we will have to be. Thank you for listening and for your support.
Okay, we appreciate it, Mr. Kaluga, Kalaga. Anyone else, just looking down the list, okay, Bronwyn?
Hi, yes, Bronwyn Delavopia, Cyrus Street, um. Wow, I, I was just really moved to hear, um, Ki- Katie speak, um. I, I don't think that, that the developer is, is in on the meeting, is he here, is he present? Does anyone see him present?
Brian, is he here? I, I'm just scanning the list, there's a long list I hear. Oh yeah, my clients are present. Yep, they're here.
Oh, good, because I, I wanted them to hear what everyone was saying, um. I have to agree with the previous speaker who said that this is clearly, we, and we all know it, it's the elephant in the room, this is. An abuse of the forty B law, we, we all, we all want. Uh, affordable housing, but that's not the real reason that, that this is being built. Um, it doesn't fit in the neighborhood, and it, we all know that something will be, uh, going in, and I have to. Say thank you and, and applaud the, the zoning board members for, for working so hard and diligently. Um, to, to make it. Uh, and these are air quotes, better, um, but, um. I, I just really need to say that we all know this isn't the right development for this location. And that real people are gonna be harmed because of it. Um, Katie and maybe others w- will be having to move because of it. And my reasoning is, if you have this much angst. Inconvenience, uh, and harm done, and this much work to try to. Hide the mass, disguise the mass of a building. Then it isn't the right development for that location, no, that's not gonna mean a hill of beans. Um, but I just have to say it, that, that this is the poster child for what is wrong with the forty B law and those who abuse it. Thank you for, for your hard work on this, uh, ZBA.
Thanks, Bronwyn. I see the parent's hand is still up, did Jerry want to add something?
Yes.
Hi, Jerry.
I am Jerry Parent, uh, Tina's husband at Seven Crescent Hill. Um, just wanna say hello to everybody and thank you all for waiting up this late, working on this project. Um, I've been listening to the last few meetings and, uh. Um, sad to say, it seems like, uh, we are in for a development. Um. I'm just opposed to the, to the monster and the pictures that I keep seeing about the size of this thing and the amount of units and the amount of parking spaces. It just really seems to, uh. Uh, it, it's, it's gonna like triple the, uh, the population in a, in a one block area. Uh, we've already got a, a, a traffic light at the end of Crescent Street in front of Sunny Nodos there. That runs about three and a half minutes, wait time to get a green light. And it goes, uh, green for about five cars, I can't imagine seventy cars trying to get down this street. To go to work or to go anywhere, it's gonna be a complete mess from Crescent Hill down to the bottom of Water Street. I don't know how anybody's gonna move in there at all, safety vehicles, forget about it, it's just not happening. I look at the, uh, the pictures, I see the. End of the building on Crescent Hill at the corner Crescent Hill and Crescent Street. About a story and a half higher than the house that's already there. Yeah, there, even with the house next to it back, but that house, that hill goes down also. So it looks like it's gonna be a four-story monster on the corner where a two-story house was. Um, the right side's too close to the, uh, immediate butter, they're like in his yard. And I, and I don't see any room for fire departments, uh, fire equipment there, I don't see any room for emergency equipment. I don't see any consideration for. Uh, fitting into the community or. Uh, how this is gonna, uh. Impact the general area at all, it's just, it's, it's just so negative. I understand that the feelings, I've talked to all my neighbors in this area, everyone on the street, everyone feels the same way, we're like, we. Just in a little bit of shock, like all of a sudden, boom. And we're talking about downsizing from fifty-six to forty-two at the last meeting, now we come back, it's, uh. We're talking about knocking off floors, getting rid of the building in the back, making some green space, we come back and it's, it's nothing. The proposal is, uh, is an obvious scam with the big picture to begin with, where everybody was shocked and they come back with a smaller picture. Like we're supposed to be impressed, everybody knows the game, they played the game, now it's time to get real. Reduce the size of the monstrosity to something we can all live with, not two units or ten units. But reduce it for real, reduce the amount of people in there and the amount of residents, it's just way too much for this area. Uh, that's all I have to say, I just wanna thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Uh, Kate Crump. It's next, I believe.
The Kate Crump, I'm at forty-two Richardson Street, um, so I'm not in immediate butter, I was actually listening in for the previous hearing. Uh, but I'm glad to be here and I am sympathetic to the neighbors, uh, I do think it's very large. Um, but I had some questions from a couple of different standpoints. Um, when you're looking at this elevation view here, I'm just interested to see if that is changing the, um. Like tilt or the grade of the sidewalk going up and down. Um, we talked about being ADA compliant and having that ramp on the side. I was just wondering for the up and down on the sidewalk, if that hill's a, a too steep grade for an ADA compliance. Uh, not a question to be answered today, just a note to say, I, I wonder what's going on there, it just looks steep to me. Um, and then my other comment was, uh, I know that the ten percent is a number that we are aiming for. To make sure that we don't have, have to deal with yet another forty B down the road. Does the reduction in units here still bring us into compliance with that ten percent when adding this building?
No, it doesn't.
Okay, and do we know how many units we need to be, to be in compliance?
Hmm, I don't have an exact figure, but the latest numbers I got from, from Erin, um. Um, suggest a couple hundred more at least.
Okay, hundreds.
And then they have to be permitted, Dave.
Right, right.
Tarrant Lane doesn't count yet.
Right, I was just gonna say, so Tarrant Lane was a hundred and seventy-three units, I think, over, uh, on Hopkins Street. They haven't pulled a permit, so they don't count, right, and there was a smaller one across, on Main Street across from, um, Tequila's. So those two with some of that are in progress, even though they're not forty B, they've got an eighteen percent requirement of affordable. So if everything were built or as proposed, we would get pretty close to ten, but again, some of those don't count because they haven't pulled permits yet, so.
My thoughts exactly, thank you so much.
Just pull up the list, see if there are any other hands. Don't see any other hands raised, so for tonight anyway, again, there'll be plenty of other opportunities, I'm sure there'll be several more hearings here. Um, on other aspects of the projects, but for night, we'll close it to the public testimony, thank you for everyone who spoke. Brian or the team, any, any, um, initial feedback or comments, or are we just? Let the comments, uh, rest as they, as they were presented.
Yeah, I, I don't, you know, I don't contradict any of the neighbors, uh, very well spoken, I understand, uh, their concerns, we respect them. I, I just would like to say, I, I do take offense to the term abuse of the forty B process. Uh, because this is not an abuse of the forty B process, this is the forty B process, this is the affordable housing statute. There's a need for affordable housing this, in this state, I'm an advocate for affordable housing. And I, and that's why forty B exists, so it's not an abuse of the process, this project is, is before you. Because it was issued a site approval letter by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, mass housing. That it was appropriate for this because of the need for affordable housing, not just in Wakefield, but in the area. And so it's certainly not an abuse of the process, it is a process, and you know, we obviously know, not a lot of people are sometimes happy with that process. But it is the process, it's not a process that was put in place by the town of Wakefield, Yar Board, the Town Council. It's a po- it's a process that was put in place by the Massachusetts State Legislature and signed into law. So if anyone has issues with forty B, they should take it up with the state, because the state is the one that put this into effect. My clients are only abiding by what the regulations are with the state for this process, and that is the process. So I just wanted to state that, um, the, um, as far as. You know, where we go, I guess, you know, we feel, you know, we're not, there's no game being played, um, this has a site approval. Uh, letter for fifty-six units from the state, the state did expect us to address some concerns. That was discussed in a hearing, which we think we're in the process of addressing. We think we have significantly addressed some of those concerns right now. We've, we've proposed a twenty percent reduction in unit count. And not only that, but a bigger reduction in bedroom count because of the, of the loss of the two units that, that I alluded to and in, into the introduction. It's been a significant reduction in the massing and the height of the building, so it's not a game that's being played, you know, we're, we're kind of at our limit. Uh, from an economic standpoint, I think, we're gonna, we're gonna have to go back and regroup, but there's not a lot, there's not a lot to give here. You know, we're, we're getting pretty comfortable where we stand with this. Um, so, you know, is, you know, I've been involved in, uh, many forty Bs, forty Bs are a negotiation process. That's what the state expects, and, you know, we're trying to do that, but, um, what we're not gonna do, what my client won't do is negotiate against himself. So what we, we've already, we feel have worked, you know, hard with the subcommittee, we, you know, I'm, I'm quite frankly disappointed. Uh, what I'm hearing tonight from, from everything that we've done, um, in, in the reductions that have taken place. So, you know, we're not gonna like go back to the subcommittee and say, oh, we're gonna drop another six units, we're not gonna throw arrows into the dark. So I, I don't think that's fear to my clients, I think there has been a significant give on, on, uh, by him at this point. And, and I'm not, I never draw a line in the sand, that's not the appropriate thing to do, because, you know, again, we did hear the concerns, we do wanna work. And continue to try to get to a common ground that works for, you know, is satisfactory or reasonable for everybody. Um, but, you know, I, I kinda don't know where we go from here, so I'm asking you, but. Um, you know, I'm glad we came back, but I hesitate, I was hoping to get more of a positive feedback tonight on everything that's been done.
Mr. Chair, quick, quick comment, and I think it, it goes to what Brian is looking for, for direction is. You know, I'm sorry you're disappointed, but. The, you, you've only addressed one issue, you, which is design, or I guess two. Design a number of units, what hasn't been addressed is, and what was. Directed by the state to be addressed to was safety and how those units actually work with the area. If you just say, I'm disappointed because you didn't say, yeah, this is great. But we don't look at how this works on Crescent Hill, and a house burns down in the back? And the fire department can't get to it, how are we, how can we say we've done our job? So we, we've addressed unit count and design, what has not been addressed is arguably an even larger component. In safety of the neighborhood, so I'm sorry you're disappointed, but there's larger issues involved.
Well, let's get to them.
Exactly, and I think that's where we need.
We're, we're, but, but for, for comments that you need to cut more units, this isn't enough units, it's too big, you know, that, 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 that's not fair either, Greg. So, you, you, that's just not fair.
Well, it seems to me that you're saying that's the only direction you heard tonight.
Well, I mean.
My entire, my, 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 my entire comment is about safety, my entire comment.
But what our direction was to work with the subcommittee. To reduce massing and consider a reduction in units, that was the direction that you gave us, and that's what we did.
Now prove it works then, prove it works.
Well, where do you wanna go with it? That's what I'm asking, that's what I'm asking.
So guys, 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 it's getting late. What we normally do is set up what the next conversation is. And I think this is where Greg was going.
Exactly.
And where we need to go is that we need to see TAC, we need to get fire and police involved. And talk about safety, we, I don't know whether it's safe or not, Greg, you don't know whether it's safe.
Exactly.
But the fire department certainly does, and the fire department needs to look at it, police needs to look at it, TAC needs to look at it. I think that's the biggest, I think that's where we need to go next, now we've got, you know, we're basically here and we got something that's gonna be. Pretty much the size.
Yep.
And can they, can they protect it, and can they protect the houses on, on the hill, and can they? Is it appropriate from a safety standpoint, and can they protect it? And normally we go to TAC and safety and, and those things kind of as the next round, so. Mr. Chairman, I would, I would move that we, you know, get the appropriate people in. And tell them what the conversations are, and let's hear from them.
I can do that. I would do that, um. So Brian, we've, you know, there, there's been traffic assessment and an analysis. And the fire department, as I said, they've already given initial feedback, but that was on a different plan, right? So I, we probably need to send them updated plans, um, maybe as of tonight. Um, or if they need to be, if you, you, doing the team wanna clean them up in any way, you know, so be it, but. Send them where we are today and ask them to review it again, and I can then, um, follow up and ask them to attend a future hearing. Um, but that way they have the latest plans and not the original ones, because they have changed, um. And we would wanna talk about some of the concerns that were raised in those initial memos and some of the questions that have been raised in these hearings. And have that conversation here, not in a subcommittee, here, right? Um, the question is whether we do that in two weeks. We plan to do that if we can get representatives here in two weeks, do you wanna strive for that and see if we can get representatives here in two weeks?
Well, I think what might have to happen before that is, I think I, I try, you know, I think some of the. I, I need our traffic consultant to look at his report now that we've reduced this by this, the number of units. Uh, and to provide maybe some more information to the town's traffic consultant, because as you said, it's not the same project that they, that they reviewed.
Okay. Um, and, and, and I looked at the memo again, and I, unless I missed it, um, it doesn't look like they actually analyzed the intersection of Water Street. They looked at traffics and sightlines, and those are certainly important aspects, right, parking, and of course, at the time, they said, yeah, not enough parking. And, um, but I didn't see where they studied that intersection.
I, I think, I, 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 I think that's a point well taken, I think there were some, I think, in fairness to the traffic advisory committee and to the town's traffic consultant. I think in the, um, in their memo, they were looking for some more additional information.
Yep.
So, you know, I think, I think, I think we need to, you know, have our traffic consultant revise what he needs to revise. Um, uh, in his study for the number of units and then also, um. Uh, provide the information that had been requested by the town's traffic consultant.
And, and, and give the TAC, sorry, Chip, to. And Brian, give the T A C, sorry Chip, just to finish the thought and to give our, and enough time for our, our T A C and V H B. Our consultant to peer review that so that they would be in a position to come to the meeting more informed. And not seeing it that night, of course. So we need to give time for perhaps both of those. And you know, fire and whatever to look at their, you know, updated aspects. So sorry, Chip, we're gonna add to that as well.
Yeah, I mean, normally with T A C, we talk about traffic and we talk about flow and we talk about lights. I, I think the bigger piece to Greg's point. That we don't normally talk about, which really needs to be talked about is the safety aspect and fire and accessibility. And that's, I think, out of T A, not within T A C's preview. So I would ask. That, you know, we specifically reach out to the fire department and have their rep. Look at this project and talk about the concerns or, or whether they don't have any concerns, that they could be able to treat it and handle it. But whether that's Tom or whoever it is in the fire department or, or the chief or whoever. To come on along with T A C. And I, I think it may, with the new plans and everything else, not be a two week say. But give everybody some time to really put their ducks in order and understand. The complexities that, that we're talking about and concerned about. And may, because it's not, I think our next meeting is almost in three weeks, isn't it?
What? It is, it is April fourteenth, three weeks from tonight.
Right. So maybe three weeks is enough time or go to the April twenty eighth meeting. But I, until we, until we kind of get all that stuff squared away and people to be able to come talk to us. I don't think, I mean. You know, I hate to be the, the, the doomsayer, but you know, to send them back and say, you're gonna reduce more, you know, maybe there'll be another one or two unit cut. Maybe there'll be three units. But there's not gonna be twenty units cut. So I think the massing is close to what we need to ask them about to say, how safe is this thing? Can you get to it? Tell, tell us your concerns.
And you think in having all three reps at the same meeting versus if firing.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, because fire and police may or may not need to see a traffic assessment. They, they could adjudicate what their own concerns might be.
Well, I mean, we.
We want to have them all.
My suggestion would be as if we ask them to come, we make this the first meeting. They know they're on at seven. They get off at seven thirty, eight o'clock.
Right. All right.
You know, we don't make them wait all night.
Right, right.
Only we get to work all night.
For free. Well, actually, having approved five hundred main, I think this would be the next first one on the hearing agenda each time from here on out. Other board members, you agree with that? Try to reach out to all three.
Yeah, because they might bring up things. You know, one, if fire might bring up something that police hadn't contemplated vice versa, and I think having a group discussion with it will be beneficial to everybody.
In my experience, Dave, is that during the design process. Is we've always reached out to the fire department and got their input. While we're in design as opposed to wait until the projects all wrapped up and then go to them. Much better because in some projects, basically they want actually roads around the building so they can fight the fire from all four sides. That's probably not going to happen here, but, but they have specific requirements. That could have an effect on the architecture or just the layout and like. And since they are also the ambulance service, certainly we've heard enough about, you know, getting an ambulance here and everything else and. So emergency services beyond fire department. So their involvement now is probably a good thing. And you're right. The fact that the design has changed a bit, whatever they've seen in the past is not what they're gonna have to react to now.
All right, I'll reach out to them.
Well, I think, I think, Mister Chair, I think you've already got a correspondence from the fire department on this. So with all due respect, I think they've already kind of stated their opinion on the project.
Yeah, but for some reason.
Really, really, it really didn't relate to getting to the building. It related to, to, to. Parking and, you know, effects on the blocking of the street.
We did, but then for some reason the V H B memo mentions concerns raised by the fire department. And a ladder truck being able to respond to this area. So I don't know why that's not in the fire department's letter, but it's in the V H B memo. So maybe it was considered after. They had written their initial memo. I don't know, and it got raised with the, the traffic advisory. But I would ask them to have another look at it. I, I think it's totally reasonable in this case. To ask them to take another look, send them the updated plan and. And just, yeah.
But I mean, I'm just saying, I've got their memo. In front of me, and basically what they say is it's gonna require an automatic sprinkler system, which. That addresses their concerns with fire in most buildings because it's.
That, this is, this goes back, Brian, that's what I'm saying. That goes to their building. If I'm concerned about the fire up the street, which they didn't address in their letter.
But, but it's not in the electric, Greg.
Exactly.
Yeah.
That's why we want to talk to them. You just have the right to do.
Well, that's fine, but.
I don't know why you would be belaboring the points, not wanting us to talk about safety.
No, I, I have no problem talking about safety, but what I don't want is to create issues that aren't there.
Then let them tell us they're not there.
We want to hear from them face to face. We want them to see the updated plan, hear the concerns of the board.
This is not a normal project.
Now, each one is unique in its own way. This one has some unique circumstances for sure. All right, that, that is our intent. And do you want to just plan for the fourteenth? Because that's three weeks out, Brian. And if, for some reason, the ducks aren't aligned, we could entertain a continuous.
I think, I'm hearing from the board very clearly, and I respect you want to hear from them. So I think, I think the traffic advisory component is gonna take longer than that. Because we need to get some information to V H B. So. So I don't know if you want the traffic advisory at the same time or as one, or if you wanted to hear from the fire department first or.
All, altogether is what the board's saying. So does that mean we push it out to April twenty eighth?
You might have to. I mean, you know, I, I would take the board's input on that because, or Rick Salvo, maybe you have some input on that because. Maybe, let me take up, maybe I can pull up the, the letter from the traffic advisory committee. Let's, let's take a look at what they're looking for. Is that okay? Just quickly. Because that might tell us where. Okay. So the additional, let's see the additional information. Provide field measurements at both side driveways as well as intersection of Crescent Street and Crescent Hill to demonstrate. The I S D and S S D meet requirements of Ashto. They wanted to expand the crash history summarized in the T I S to include all crashes at Crescent Street from Water Street to Otis and Center Street. And ref, they reference intersection, provide details regarding logistics about deliveries. And then they make recommendations of no install zone. Let me see if there's anything else. That's really it. I mean, that, that seems to be the main things that they were looking for. So I suppose we could request to, to put it on for the, for the next meeting, but with the anticipation, we might have to. Continue it. Because I think what's gonna happen with the, with the, with V H B, I think they're gonna probably want it to go back to the traffic advisory committee. And, and I just wonder, you know, what this, what their schedule would be to set up a meeting. Do you know what I'm saying on that? I don't think that, I don't think V H B, I think they're gonna want to take it back to the whole T A C when they get the information that they're looking for.
But weren't, wasn't V H B looking for information from your teams?
Yes.
Right, so V H B has to do some more to give them the data to T A C and V H B and then have a meeting to review it.
That's right.
Yeah.
Restrick, Mister Chairman.
Yeah.
We might be able to break out the two things because fire has, fire and safety has really never been part of T A C. And traffic and parking and all of that. So we might be able to address. To be able to keep the thing moving, address safety. On our next issue and see if it does have any impact on design or development as it needs to move forward, given the comments they made. Like the Mister McBane said, you know, geez, they may want acts, more access to this or more access to that. Where they can't fight that back corner, and so they're gonna need access down there. So in the respect that it might have a design impact or a spatial impact on the site. Maybe we do do just safety and then do traffic when it's ready to go. As an idea to keep things moving so that if the design has to change or whatever. They can keep working on that. My thoughts. And it probably wouldn't be a two hour discussion. It'd probably be a shorter discussion.
It may, and they may bring up things that then need to be fed back because maybe it changes the design, the building, and then that other traffic assessments. In process, and now that might have to be adjusted. So.
I would agree with Chip on this one, that they, they could easily be separated.
Everybody put a date and time down that he agreed with me?
So I can, if, if folks want to go that route, again, it's no guaranteed. Stuff may get raised and we have to revisit it with traffic. We may have to bring them back or some, or have whatever conversations or get memos. So there might still be follow ups. But we could certainly have that conversation. And we can ask for the fourteenth. Brian, if that's okay with you and the team. And meanwhile, work the traffic thing that we envision might take longer and we'll, we'll entertain that when we're ready. It might be the twenty eighth. It might be after that, depending on how long it takes, right? Yep. Okay. All right.
That, that, we defer to the board, and, and that, that sounds fine.
All right, so safety, reach out to fire and police departments. Anyone else, board members? We're gonna do this. Those are the two key areas. Okay.
I assume fire would know about ambulance too. I guess if you can get a fire truck up, you can get an ambulance.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they, it falls under that same category. Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's really just that stuff.
Okay, so I'll reach out and ask them to review the updated plan, which we have electronic copies of, right? Brian or team, do you want to send me any, anything updated or just use what was sent to us for tonight?
I think for tonight, right, Rick and Peter?
Yeah, I, I, I think that's the right approach. Send them the plans that we have. You know, get the fire department's input, you know, and then at least we can maybe start to move past. The, the, the general configuration and start to dive into how the design really works. So I think that's the exact right approach.
The only thing I'm wondering is if we should send them a, a plan of, of what's, what is at this point. Been proposed, so they're not looking at kind of next, next to each other, so they, they're kind of confused at what they're looking at.
So take out the comparison sheet.
Yeah, because what was tonight was a comparison. We showed the old building versus what was being proposed, and I'm just concerned that, you know, they, they weren't here, so they, they might not know what they're looking at. I think it might be better to just send them what's been.
I see.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, we can do that. We can pull those sheets out.
Okay, if you're gonna do that, then I would ask to please take a look at the unit counts and bed counts. Because I noticed a couple inconsistencies. I wasn't gonna bring it up.
Okay.
Because I figured it might change again, but just each one of the sheets where it shows the, the number of units and beds and the totals. I think the number of one and two beds, as you said, changed as through the subcommittee process. So just check the numbers, just so I, I think. They add up to forty six instead of forty five or something, but.
Okay, thank you.
Just double check. If you're gonna update them, then I would just do that, just so there's no confusion there that it's forty five as of tonight and with those applicable sheets. And what are we sending them? It's just the architectural and site. So the site.
And we should probably add a grading plan to that, Brian, yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that that would be helpful to the fire department so they can see where walls exist and so on and so forth.
Yep, okay. So if you can send those to Gail. Our secretary, and she'll get it or send them to her and I, then that way we both have a copy. She'll have them for the file. And I'll use those to forward to, to those two departments. Okay.
That's fine. Thank you.
We have a plan for next meeting.
Um, Dave.
Yeah.
I see a neighbor's hand still up. I think we should explain that the public testimony has ended tonight.
Yes, and as I did it, I did announce.
Has ended, but you said at the beginning that you were going to read the letters from other people. I just wanted to find out if you're actually going to still do that, or you're moving that out to the next meeting also.
I thought those people spoke.
Yeah, I thought both people spoke on their own behalf, like.
One of them said something, but she said she could not read letter herself because she ended up crying, but I still thought that should be entered into the record, no?
Well, they're in the file, they're in the record. I can forward them to the other board members, to, to board members, folks want me to read these letters?
We can do it next one, as long as they get right at some point. That would be wonderful.
Okay, I'm, I'm just gonna defer to next time because we've already pulled up public testimony, and it is getting very late. We still have another hearing or two.
Stan, good night. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right.
Hey, one minor thing.
Oh.
Can we just make, someone said tonight that the, the intersection of water and Crescent was in part of the traffic study. Can we just make sure that's true? And if, if it is true that it should be looked at.
Yeah, I didn't see it referenced. I read, I saw Lincoln and these other, you know, Crescent Hill. But I didn't see water, obviously with the signal. So as, as one of the butters raised, you know, the signal time and queuing. It should definitely be part of the study. It's right down the street. So. We'd want to make sure that's accounted for and analyzed. Fully noted, Brian.
Yeah, I, I would. I would say that you, you would need to correspond with, with the, with Lieutenant Anderson on that, Mister Chair.
I can, but wouldn't V A I look at it as part of their analysis?
Usually what happens is that when these traffic studies are done, that V H B, the town's traffic peer review consultant. Gives our traffic consultant the scope that he wants. And that's what we do. Uh, so, and I haven't looked at it in detail. I don't know, and, and I'm not saying it shouldn't be done, but. So I, I, I just don't think that it would really be appropriate for me to go to my guy and say, you know, you, you need to do this. I think, I think. It, it might be more appropriate that you would say to your peer review consultant that, you know, A, why wasn't this included? And maybe B, we'd like it to be included. And then if you would correspond with. With our guy. Does that make sense?
That's fine. As long as it gets looked at.
Yeah, I'm not trying to avoid it. I just, I just think, you know, I think that it would be important that the town's peer review consultant would hear from your board that you wanted to look at.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's absolutely important that that be part of this. If you're, if you go back to Shaw's, that whole corridor basically was part of the issue. So you know, the changing traffic light signal times and stuff like that has an effect. On basically Water Street as well and Main Street. So, but to, to, to not, not have that part of the study seems foolish.
Well, I'm not saying we won't do it, Jim, but you know, I, I, that's, I'm just saying that I think that both, both consultants need to be on the same page.
Point taken. I've, I've got it. I've got it. It's getting late. Anything else?
I move that we continue this to April fourteenth to discuss safety.
Back in.
Any discussion? On favor, Chip?
Yes.
Amy? Jim? Joe?
Yes.
Tom?
Yep.
Greg?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Thanks for your time tonight. We'll see you in a few weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Deep breath, exhale, okay. Twenty one dash forty, forty one and forty two, sixty two Foundry LLC at sixty two and seventy six Foundry Street.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. For the record, Brian McGrath representing sixty two Foundry LLC. I think this might be thankfully a little bit brief. The, with me tonight is Mark Slater. Mark, are you still awake?
Still here, yeah.
Okay, so Mark is going to, Mark is our site civil engineer and, and what we wanted to do was to. Kind of cover, do a quick cover of the site civil aspects of this and certainly happy to, once Mark is done, happy to answer. I'm certainly happy to, once Mark is done, happy to answer any questions that the board might have. But I will say he he's continuing to work with the town engineers. We always do on every project. Who usually kind of takes the lead on site civil uh components. So. That said, Mark.
Okay. Uh, thank you again, Mark Slager from Allen Engineering. Uh, we have received comments from the engineering department, the fire department. Uh, conservation and also I've received some email correspondence from Vinnie over at the uh gas and light department. Uh, as a result of those, we've made some minor changes to the plans, mostly just additional information. Um, and I'll just uh share my screen. I'm wondering what working with two. Monitors, so I just want to make sure everyone can see. Uh, can everyone see the screen?
Yes.
Okay, so this is the existing site. Uh, it's about forty six thousand square feet, mostly paved. Um, and it has three existing buildings on it, all of which are coming down. Uh, as you can see, Maple Street um is kind of widened and it's all basically just pavement, all connecting to each other. And what we're going to propose is some improvements to Maple Street along with uh the demolition and of all the buildings and everything. Uh, and I'll just go to a uh another plan here. So this is the uh proposed building. Uh, mixed use with a parking garage. We have an entrance on Foundry Street and another entrance um.
Excuse me, Mark, your screen didn't change. We're still looking at the existing. Or at least I am.
All right. Figure out how to change that. Is that better? You see proposed?
Do not. Also, the title part on the right is cut off anyway, but no, it's not changing.
All right. Yeah, I'll reshare. How's that? You see a proposed parking garage and mixed use?
Yes.
Okay. All right, uh, this shows um basically the the building and the parking area out along the uh the rear of the property. Uh, and the parking and entrance off of Foundry Street. Uh, and on the parking uh entrance to the parking area off Maple Street. Uh, Maple Street is going to be improved um during part of this process. And what we're proposing is some granite curving and a new sidewalk along uh the south side of Maple Street. And just meeting that whole area up where right now it's all just pavement. Um, there's also some pretty inadequate drainage there. The red represents the exist existing drainage that's got going to be removed. Um, it's got some very small pipes like a six inch pipe, and then there's, you know, going to an eight inch pipe, and it's all very flat. So we're going to propose to remove that and replace it with all twelve inch reinforced concrete pipe. Uh, and that'll help improve the uh the capacity of the system in that area. Uh, we've also got an infiltration system on the rear of the property. Um, we've done some testing in the area. There's quite a bit of fill. Oh, five feet of fill in the back and then below that is all coarse sand. So it's very good for um. For infiltration. Uh, the system itself will receive all the roof runoff. Along with uh most of the parking area in the back. Uh, will we go into the infiltration system? As a result of that, there'll be a significant uh reduction in the uh rate of runoff from the site. Uh, in most storms, it's going to be about a seventy percent reduction in the rate of runoff. And also the volume of runoff will be um over sixty percent in most of the storm events. So that'll help um alleviate any drainage problems that might exist out in Foundry Street. Uh, because all of the site runoff currently goes into the Maple Street, which eventually goes into the Foundry Street system. Some of the um comments from the engineering department were to replace the existing eight inch water main. A small section of that was already done in conjunction with the sixty nine Foundry Street project. Uh, but in order to get all the way to Maple Street, there are two sections uh of existing eight inch pipe that's going to be removed and replaced with new twelve inch piping. The fire department has requested a um fire hydrant on the side of the bill, same side of the street as the building. That's actually already been installed uh as part of some of the work that was done in the roadway for the sixty nine Foundry Street. So right in here, you can see the existing uh fire hydrant that's currently served off of a new twelve inch main. That was put into that section. We are aware that the units themselves won't be able to be serviced by gas. However, uh according to Attorney McGrail, the restaurant will be. Serviced by gas. So we've eliminated the gas meter bag that was located off of Maple Street, but we do show one. Uh, gas service coming in for use of the building, the restaurant, the building. We've also added to the plan the existing underground electric that was uh installed in Foundry Street. Uh, there's also an electric conduit that comes over to uh a handhole in the sidewalk. Uh, from that handhole, there's going to be a new electric trench coming back down to a transformer location. In the uh back corner of the property, uh and that was at the direction of the gas and light department. As far as the location of the transformer. Anyone have any question? Okay.
I think we got a message across the gas and light.
It seems that way. Okay, the only the only other comment we had were um on sewer. They wanted some uh calculations as far as how much additional flow. Uh, it was kind of difficult to come out with what would the existing flow was. So I kind of underestimated that. Uh, and then compared that to the proposed flow and came out with an increase of about fifteen thousand two hundred and eighty gallons a day, which. Really isn't that much more slow. Uh, it just seems like a big number, but there was a section of um sewer that was replaced in Foundry Street as well. Will be tying into um. That section was replaced as part of the sixty nine Foundry Street project. So that information has also been updated on the plan, and we do show two sewer connections coming into the building. Uh, one of which will also service the floor drains in the garage. So we've added an oil water separator um for that as well. And I guess that's pretty much wraps it up for um for the site devil. I'll turn it over to you guys and be happy to answer any questions.
Next part, and board members, any questions?
I'm here.
I'm good.
All right. All right, thank you, Brian. Was there anything else for tonight? That was it? You're on mute. Brian?
I'm here. Sorry about.
No worries. Okay.
Yeah, hey, um. Uh, Mark, can you bring up the site plan with the parking, etc.?
Sure.
There we go. So one of the things I I wanted to point out to the board, um, this property is subject to an easement. For access to this building next door, just for like maintenance purposes, etc. And that easement runs right where our parking spaces are. So we vented into an agreement with this owner of the property that we're we're relocating the easement to go. In conjunction with our driveway. And I just wanted you to know that, um, because obviously some it's important that you do know that. So. Um, but we've already entered an agreement with them to do that because if they're supporting the project and they just didn't want to lose. They haven't used that forever. It's it's in case they need to get to this side of their buildings. See, I was right on the property line. To maintain it, etc.
So there's not going to need to be a gate or a driveway.
No, no, nope, nope. Just to basically get there, Chip. And they already have that. They already have that, right? But that easement is located right on the edge of the property where it normally would be. You know, that's usually where easements are, but because we're putting our parking spaces there, we we've relocated to where our driveways are going to be.
Hey, something just jumped out at me, guys. Why is the trash up in the front part of the property? I think that's from where the um access from the units. This this part of the building is still um, or this part of the parking is still underneath the building. So there'll be access coming down from the lobby area. Okay, okay, so it's not outside. No, no, it's 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 underneath. I missed that. Okay.
Okay, anything else, board members?
Mark, was he outlined of the building? Can you show that for the board?
Yeah, there is a, I guess trash is. It is outside, but it'll be right next to the building, kind of. And we do have a fence enclosure, but you can see the the trash pad for the trash barrels is right here, and this is the outline of the building. Future conversation to hear have the rationale for that, that's all. Seems a weird spot.
Think what you're saying is you're tabling that issue, right, Mr. Tabell?
Correct.
And not fully satisfied.
That just seems a little strange to me. I I want to hear a little bit better explanation as to why it's there. They don't tend to be the cleanest, neatest things in the world. We'll go over that with the architect and see what he has in mind. Thank you. Yeah.
That's a point well taken. Yeah.
Okay, all right, anything else? All right, so that was it for the evening, right? Because the other aspects that we carried from last meeting, architecture, T A C, some of the stuff we talked about in the rear. Uh, we table till the fourteenth of uh the next year.
And the architect will be prepared to go. He's he said he's pretty excited on some of the stuff he's come he's coming up with on the uh North Ave side of this.
Okay.
I talked to him today.
All right, but that was the only punchless item or agenda topic for this evening, so.
That was it.
Okay. All right. Uh, once again, again, we'll open up the public testimony for the evening. Again, not a lot of new testimony, but if anyone has any questions about what we just heard, please raise your hand. Otherwise. There'll be other opportunities at future meetings on other topics. All right, so you know, hands will close it to public testimony for the evening. So till the fourteenth, and we hit those other topics, hopefully. Uh, also T A C, maybe?
No, because the traffic study is is not is not been uh sent to them yet, so we we won't be ready on that.
Okay.
But that that delay is on us. Not not anybody else but us.
Okay, just to set expectations. So next time it's more about the architecture and updates.
That's right. And then we'll go more where we stand with the uh. With the with traffic, but uh to T A C's defense, they haven't even seen anything yet.
Okay. All right. A motion to continue would be in order. Chip, you're on mute. If that's you making a motion.
No, I said you've already done public and there was not wasn't any.
Correct.
Okay, sorry, I kind of missed it. Uh, so I moved that we continue this to April fourteenth.
Thank you. Any discussion? On favor, Chip?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes, Greg?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, thanks for the updates and we'll see you in a few weeks.
Hey, thank you very much.
Okay, on to new hearings. Twenty one dash forty five and forty six. Um, not quite sure how to pronounce Hagos Walday. Walt at forty nine Harrison Ave. Sorry if I completely butchered the name. Brian, you're on mute if you're speaking.
Sorry about that. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Represent uh Mr. Wald in this application regarding forty nine Harrison Ave in Wakefield. Uh, here on behalf is is his son, highly Kahasi, who was uh on uh, he lives, he resides in the house. And he is his uh dad's authorized agent to uh be here tonight to discuss this with the board. I also, um, we also have uh, um, I believe it's uh, is it Angelo? Is Angelo here? Um, let me see, or I'm sorry, is Paul here, our architect? Curio, Paul?
Yes.
Oh, great. Thank you. Great. So Paul is here, um, uh, who is our architect. Basically, um, highly on behalf of his dad is in the process of renovating the property at forty nine Harrison Ave. Um, and and Paul is his architect. And you know, I've got the site plan, but I think uh the the best way to get, which I'll get to, but I think the best way to give the board an idea of what. Um, highly is proposing is to have Paul kind of uh take over. Um, and if you could, Paul, maybe you can um share your screen. There you are. Oh, you're on mute. You say hello.
Okay, sorry. Good evening, everyone. I'm just trying to get the screen share. Do I need to be given permission to do that?
You should be able to grab the screen share and just pick an application or your entire screen or everyone should have the rights.
Okay, do you guys see that?
Yeah.
Um, let me just. Uh, so so basically, um, we we there's, and I apologize, there's a little bit of detail missing from the existing street. But these are two renderings of the home. Um, the upper corner here is an existing one, and this is the proposed um of the facade. Um, basically, it is a um two story home and it's on ledge. Uh, it's a very tight property. So the um, you know, on three sides of the property, um, we're over the setbacks um in existing conditions. Um, there is a a detached garage in the uh up at the top of the driveway. Um, there are retaining walls. But it's um, it's a very steep slope in the back. There's no basement on this this property. Um, basically, it's built into on the ledge in the back of the property. And um, the the um owners purchased the pro, you know, is wants to do some renovations, increase the space. Um, they're very, they're very small bedrooms, um, three small bedrooms on the on the second floor. Um, and they want to make some improvements to the home. Um, we want to expand uh the. The roof really needs to be, you know, reconstructed, so we want to expand some living area up into the attic. Um, so we're really proposing a two and a half story home. And we do have, we are proposing an addition on the back. Um, I'm gonna move to just a rear rendering. So um, there's a small single story space on the back of the home off the second floor. And we're proposing to remove that and add uh basically a master suite toward the back of the house. Um, this is an existing garage. It's built into the ledge. Uh, it's it's barely, uh, you know, it's it's one of these older garages. It's barely a single car. Um, size and um, we've we're proposing taking the roof off of that. It's it's solid concrete walls that are built into the ledge and we're suggesting maybe just uh capping that with a flat roof that can be a a deck. The the ledge and the stone in the back of the yard and how tight the property is, there's really not a lot of usable land back there. Um, so we're proposing kind of a a back door um off of the home that go, and we turn this garage into a rooftop deck. Uh, basically, so the the owners have some outdoor space in the back of the house. That they can use, but they have they have a pretty decent front yard. That's that the way it's positioned with the street, um, their setback off of it. That's, that, the way it's positioned with the street, um, there's setback off of it quite a bit. Um, but it aligns with the neighbor's house because they're on a curve, so, um, that's, that's really, I can run through the, the plans, um, the existing and proposed plans if you want real quick. Um, for the ground floor, we're, we're kind of opening up the space, giving them more of an open living area. Uh, we do actually have an addition on the fronts. Um, to use some of that setback on the front as well, and creating a porch and new entry, um, for the family.
So you said that the existing garage is a detached garage?
Yeah, it's attached by retaining walls. Um, the way that the back of the house, um, has a pathway, let me see if I can show you. Um, so these are retaining walls that are cut into the ledge, these, there's actually some steps here. Um, and the gra, the garage is, is kind of all cast into concrete here, but, uh, it's, I guess technically it's detached.
And you're talking about attaching it, aren't you?
Not, so not directly, um, we're coming very close with the addition. And then we're project, we're suggesting that the, the roof is reframed. Uh, to span to the side of the addition so that they can walk out. I don't know if you can see that, okay. This is the roof of the existing garage. And then we are gonna basically. Come almost right up to it, I can't remember.
They're gonna share a wall?
It's gonna share a wall, yeah.
So it's becoming attached?
It's becoming attached.
Okay. And where's the site plan for this whole thing?
Um, that.
I've got that, um, I can, if you stop sharing, I can bring that up. Paul?
Sure.
Thank you. Um, Chip, hold on. Nope. Okay. There you go. Let me sure, let me rotate it. There you go.
So who did, did, did one of our usual suspects do this, Brian?
No, this is a, this is a different survey, um, Chip, mass survey consultants.
So there's no ties on the garage to the side setbacks, is what I noticed.
No, and I talk, I, I, I connected with him today, he's in the process of doing that, so. Um, he's gonna do that.
Because, doesn't that change all, once you connect this to the house?
Yeah, so I mean, that's one of the issues.
Right?
That's one of the issues to discuss with the board, I guess. Um, you know, it, it's. If it's a detached garage, and then it becomes attached, then that will become part of the principal dwelling, so. Um, you know, I, I think that would then. Need to meet the setback of the principal dwelling, so that would, that would, where it's grandfather now would then need relief because it's no longer. A detached garage, but it's become part of the principal dwelling.
Is it attached? Isn't it attached because of the foundation though?
Well, I mean, I think, I, I think, you know, Joe, that's an interesting point. I, I think kinda, kinda what I need the board to do, um, would be to make a determination. Um, if it's attached or not now, right, because that, and, and.
I would call it attached, because it's attached, right, by foundation.
Yeah, so maybe, Paul, can you win, can you kind of, uh, get into that a little bit more on, on the current situation with the garage in connection to the house?
Yeah, um. I mean. It's a really, it's a really funny condition because it, it's really embedded in the ledge. Um, I don't know if it helps to show some photos of it, I, I may have a.
That'd be great.
Uh, let me see if I have, um, if you can give me one second, and just let me see if I have a good photo of that corner.
Because if it's atta, if it's currently attached, now it's, now it's a legal, it's part of the legal non-conforming structure, so you know, I think everything that's happening here is basically a finding. Um, if it's not, then I think it would, it would be something new, so it would be, um.
I'm not sure retaining wall or foundation makes it attached.
Foundation does, I believe. A retaining wall maybe might not, but a foundation does.
Yeah, but see, you've got two buildings with roofs on them, basically, they're two different buildings. The fact that one has a concrete wall attached to the other one doesn't make it attached, just, it's just a retaining wall, period.
Well, can we see some pictures? Do you have any pictures, Paul? Are you able to find them?
Yeah, um, please let me know if these scroll through, um, so this is the single-story space, and, uh, it's not gonna go through, um. This is the single-story space, which it actually, this, this is the wall skirting around, and it does serve as foundation for the single-story space. I can't seem to.
Just stop sharing and then share a new picture that will work, if you can.
Um, here we go. And this is the garage, you can see this is all kind of cast wall, this is concrete, um, that's cast into the ledge here. This, this is the wall that kind of wraps fully around, and this is a walkway that goes from the driveway up some steps. The wall that's cast here does just kind of loop into the foundation of the single-story space, and this is the roof structure that we're planning to take off, uh, for a flat roof.
So, so via this picture, I'd have to say this is a detached garage, because there's a walkway between the two buildings.
I agree with you, Chip.
And I, 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 I agree.
Joe, I, I like your thought process, but I can't, I can't quite buy it on this one.
No, and I, and I agree with the two, Chip, I mean, you know, it, we've gotta make sure it's right, and I agree, you know, so now the question is. What we're going to do, does that make it attached?
Yeah.
Yeah. Is it Jim?
I think so.
Yeah.
Because you're taking away the walkway, there's gonna be a common wall. You're gonna be able to walk from one onto the other.
Yeah.
You're, you're attaching it.
Yeah, and we're primarily attaching it to utilize the foundation.
Yeah. So I guess the question, so the two things I see, Brian, from this picture is, one, how close does the. New attached garage come to the lot line? And are you within twenty feet of the neighbor's house?
Yeah, 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 under the footnote in the, in the bylaw.
Yeah.
Understood. Well, the good news is, um, and I'm gonna, if I can share again, um, highly has approached the neighbors and including that neighbor. And they've, um, I'll send this to you, Mr. Charlie Miller, tonight, that they've, uh, signed a. Support.
And who would be the neighbor on that side, forty?
I think that's fifty-five, highly.
Fifty-five Harrison.
Yeah, highly, you there? Can you unmute for a minute?
Yes, I'm here.
Hi, highly.
How you doing?
Good, so you can confirm, you've spoken to that neighbor on that side, and they don't have any issue?
Yeah, he does not have any issues. He said that he'll be willing to, um, sign anything else if it helps with, um, finishing a project through.
All right, I just wanted you to give testimony to the board that that was the case, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Well, we do need to, if you wanna bring up the site plan again, and maybe just cover the other aspects, but.
That'd be great.
Sounds like we need another update on this, just. To see, because it clearly still shows the garage detached, or it still appears. And it doesn't include the measurements, but the other aspects, you're coming off the front and the back.
Yeah. Okay. Here it is.
Just so we fully understand the ask.
Yeah.
Because I think you did apply for finding in a variance, right?
I did, I did, I covered it, covered it, because I thought this might, you know. So yeah, so if the garage was attached, we could just do this as a finding, right, and then. The other thing is, you know, this side already doesn't comply, because it needs to be fifteen, so it's only eleven. Um, under the Barada case, we could, we could go closer, uh, with a finding. But I think the, I think the problem is, we potentially have a new non-conformity, as Mr. Todd Bell mentioned, because once this becomes attached. Then you have to look at the distance from the house next door. If it doesn't comply with the twenty feet, that probably is a new non-conformity that will require a variance. Because my guess is the house currently is more than twenty feet away from the house next door. Does that make sense?
Is the new, is there also another new non-conformity, the twenty feet, but also the new, I guess, if we're calling it that, attached garage to the lot line, so it's two, right?
Yeah, but I think, Greg, that could probably, that, if, that could be done with a finding, because the house already doesn't comply to the fifteen feet.
Okay, even though it's a new structure?
Well, I guess it's an addition to the house, once you connect it, right, so, um, that's.
Okay, okay, yeah, 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 it's not really a new structure, yeah, 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 okay.
That would be potentially, you know, the two-prong, it, it may be making it worse, but not substantially detrimental.
But I think, I think Greg, we're gonna find out, Greg, that this, uh, this, this garage is probably closer to the twenty feet, which is gonna trigger the variance.
Yeah.
That's my, that's my guess, and when I talk to the, when I talk to the, uh, uh, survey today, he's, he's gonna shoot that and get a distance.
Just to, just to add to complication here, of course. Um, in the Abutter's house, between the Abutter's house and the lot line, there is this large. I wanna call it a shed, but it's almost the size of a garage. That's been built or installed. At the end of the dr, at the end of their driveway, which is corresponds to the front of the Abutter's house. It's not, it's on skids. It's, uh, looks very temporary. But it looks very solid at the same time, so I don't, I think we should stay away from that, but make sure he goes to the house and not to this structure that's there.
Oh, um. Well, that's an interesting point, Jim, because I, I, I think we gotta look at what the, what the bylaw reads, if it's, I think it says, I think it says principal dwelling, I do think it says that, but. Thanks for complicating it more.
I, I, the, um, I don't believe this is a legal structure, I think it's been put in. Uh, when you look at, when you look at Google, basically, you'll see that the structure's not there, and now it is.
Yeah. So, the footnote. Footnote ten says is, there is no minimum building separation between the same lot. Additionally, all dwellings other than fences, uh, must maintain a minimum separation of twenty feet from any dwelling on any abutting parcel. Okay.
This is not a dwelling.
No, I know, I just wanted to make sure what the bylaw said on that, so. And, and I think there's one other issue I, I'd like to discuss with, with the board and the architect, um, Paul, could you bring your plan back up again, is that possible?
Sure. You just have to turn yours off.
Oh, sorry about that. There you go. So Jim, one of the things I just wanted to discuss, because I've applied to the variance that we could get it if we needed it, or we, we could ask, we should, I should rephrase that, we could request it if we needed it, because I've applied. Um, is what is happening up on that top floor gonna make this a three-story under the bylaw?
I don't know, what's the height of the building gonna be at the end?
What's going on in that top floor plan, um, Paul?
So on the, on the, um, so we're, we're going, uh, based on two-and-a-half stories, so we, we haven't designed it to be fifty percent larger than the second floor. Um, hold on, let me get to it. Um, we've basically, um, we're, we're rebuilding the roof as a, as a gable roof with a shed dormer on the front, and there's, the intent is that for a, a small bedroom to be at the top. And we've designed it to, uh, pro, uh, pretty close to fifty percent, I believe we're, we're below the fifty percent area of the floor below. Um. Actually, with this addition, it would be much lower, but for the footprint of the original house, um, you know, we're adding a bedroom up there, so we're at two-and-a-half stories. Uh, because really, our first floor is the basement, also, it's a, it's. It's half below grade in the back, um.
So that, so that we have a definite, just, we have a definition of half-story, story under which, uh, a story which is under a gable hipper gambor roof with less than one half of the floor area. Has a clear height of seven feet or more.
Correct, this means that we're actually putting a new roof on with a steeper pitch. Um, to, in order to, to get the extra ceiling height.
That's fine, we don't need to bore the board with it, but just take a look at the definition of half-story in the Wakefield bylaw, Paul, and make sure we meet that.
Okay.
And if we don't, we've, we've requested the relief that the board could consider if they would entertain it, but I, I just don't wanna not ask for it if we need it, okay?
I doubt, once he gets through the calculations, I doubt that he is, he's, he's gonna, it's gonna be difficult to live within that space to begin with, and that's why the lift on the front. And, and his closets basically in there are not gonna be full-height closets, they're gonna be partial height closet, so. Your seven foot is a killer, basically, up there, if you don't work with it well. So it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be under fifty percent.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that we're not getting done, uh, potentially getting done here and then getting stopped at the building inspector, that's all.
Okay.
So, you know, I always like to make, you know, I always wanna make my, you know, pitch to the board on the variance, I think there's, um, unique circumstances here, because you've saw all the walls in the back and the buildings and the layout. Um, the topography is very unique, um, a, as far as the hardship goes, you know, the condition of the house. Um, and, and, you know, a growing family. Um, and, you know, as far as the impact on the neighborhood, um, the neighbors support it, and I think, you know, my opinion would be that I would, um, suggest that the. The finished product is gonna be a lot better than what's there now. And I don't think we're looking for the board to, to close this out and potentially vote, because we have to fix that site plan, so, um, I guess we'd like to. Try to find out if the board is in general agreement with what we're doing here, and then if that's the case, we would continue with to your next hearing.
I think it looks fine.
Seems reasonable, so on the side. In terms of relief, finding perhaps in a variance.
Yes.
Um, the rear, we didn't really cover when you had the site plan up, but.
It's all a finding.
That's a finding.
Yeah.
It's already non-compliant, and you just, we could do that with a finding. And then potentially the third floor, although it sounds like maybe not, but I just put on the list, maybe, we're gonna confirm if the third, that third story comes into play. But the other zoning details that are on the plan seem like they're compliant already, and even though the addition on the front. Um, it just reduces it, but there's plenty of frontage anyway, and lot area building coverage, so that's the relief potentially, right?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
All right, cool. Any questions from other board members, on what's presented, or the relief requested, or? No, where they're headed? Okay. All right. Just looking for correspondence. Don't know if we got any for this. Uh, fire department reviewed the plan, uh, no objections. I don't know that we heard from ConCon, let's see. I don't see anything from, oh, we did, sorry, it was buried. Outside their jurisdiction will not require review from the ConCon, okay. All right. Um, we can open up the public testimony, if anyone has a comment or question, we would entertain that at this time, please raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. Excuse me. Seeing no hands, we'll close it to public testimony for the evening, so next meeting should be sufficient, Brian?
Good, yes.
I move we continue this to April fourteenth.
Exactly.
Any discussion? All in favor, Chip?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so, unanimous, okay, thank you, we'll see you in a few weeks.
Thank you.
All right, have a good night. All right, Brian, we have another matter?
Yeah, this is, I think, gonna be fairly, um, quick, um, we, um, Gil, are you here? Yeah, this is, I think, gonna be fairly, um, quick, um, we, um, Gil, are you here?
Yes, I'm here.
I just woke her up.
I actually said Gil, who's my client. So, um, this, um, we just wanna have a discussion with you on, on, uh, two ninety-one Salem Street, um, which we were here before for some major modifications in the backyard, and we wanna update you on where we are with that. Uh, we, uh, my client had told me that we were gonna build things, uh, in compliance, which they pretty much have. Um, we were at the planning board last night on this, um, they have the house up front un- under agreement to sell. And, um, so they're trying to get, they, they've done the as-built plans, Paul Finocchio was here. Um, and we, we're, we're trying, what we were trying to accomplish at the planning board last night and going to try to do it here too, was to say that the, the house out front has been built in accordance, uh, the as-built shows in accordance with the plan, uh, to look to get a correspondence to the building inspector, that it was okay to release the, the front lot for a certificate of occupancy. The back lot, um, is pretty much, uh, pretty close to as-built, but there's gonna be requested revisions on that out back, and we've, um, which we think are minor in nature, we've already had a site civil engineer do a full report that we've submitted to the town engineer, uh, to look at it, uh, to confirm that it will, uh, either be as good or better than what was originally designed, uh, and Bill Renault is looking at that, he's gonna go out to the site, I'm gonna meet him out there, he's gonna walk the site. Um, and, um, so when we got the planning board last night, they said that they wanted to see more completion done on the front lot, uh, before they considered it, and they also wanted to see, uh, the town engineers', uh, report. Um, so they kinda tabled it to their next meeting, and Bill's gonna be going out there sometime next week to take a look at it.
So Brian, more, Brian, what did more completion mean?
Uh, well, um, basically, what happened was they were finishing up the drain out front, Chip, um, if you remember, in the front lot, there's a drain.
On the left-hand side?
Yeah, as you're facing the lot, and what they, they had, um, lifted up the, the walkway to do that work, and it wasn't completed, and there was also a pile of dirt on the lot, so the planning board said, you know, i- it's just not quite there yet, you know, get, get it more completed, let the town engineer look at it, and then come back at our next meeting. So, um, so that, you know, that's where we are, so we're really not looking for any action from your board tonight, because we just kinda wanna let you know that what, what we expect is we'll be at your meeting in three weeks, um, and you will have a full report from the town engineer, I spoke to him today, he said he's, he feels he can be helpful in getting this, uh, resolved. And, um, hopefully, uh, we'll be able to make a good presentation to you that night, uh, to hopefully get the front lot released, and then a commitment with how the back lot is gonna be completed is acceptable.
Brian?
And a timeframe?
In a timeframe, yeah.
Brian?
Yes, sir.
So, I believe the buildings are built basically based on what we eventually approve, and I say eventually, because it went through several minor modifications. But I'll tell you, in walking around there back in November, when we found the grating all screwed up, um, is there a, there's a tree out front missing? There's a bunch of shrubbery along the right-hand side that are missing, and it looks like the planting on, on house one, or the front house basically, is a little weak. So, um, you know, I don't know what the plan is, but at this point. Digging up the snow, we're not, you know, they probably haven't done any things since Chip and I were out there from November, except for maybe regrade the back of the site.
Yeah, hey Gil, can you address that quickly, are you there?
No, good.
Uh, this is DJ, actually.
Hey DJ.
Um, hello, uh, board members, um, yeah, so, um, as far as the planting is concerned, um, we did not do anything yet, however, uh, we actually did do the inventory on the plant, so the planning that's missing will actually, uh, go ahead and do that before our next meeting.
Great, so you have the ability to do that, DJ, you got the plants?
Uh, yes, actually, I, uh, made a couple of phone calls, uh, to Northeastern Nursery and a couple of nurseries, actually, they do have them now.
Okay, so Jim, that will be planted before we come back.
Yeah, so, I mean, it was the grading issues, the, the as-bills and the plants, basically, I think, and one light fixture that had been nailed by somebody backing up.
Jim, and one of the issues that the planning board ba- brought up last night was that on the front, the front house, you might understand this, that the stairs on the deck are now on the side.
Um, yeah.
All right, Chip, you know, and, and their con- and their concern was that, that the, when you step off of those steps, that you're, you're almost like right into the swale. Because, and, and I don't know if you have any recollection on that, Jim?
Well, I'd have to go back, I'd have to go back to any modification that was made by the board, cuz I know at one time there were also two door, doors on that front house that came out to the same porch, one from a lobby and one from a staircase or something like, it's kinda weird.
Yeah.
But, but the swale, Jim, would have been on the left-hand side of the driveway, right?
Right, I didn't, I don't remember.
I don't remember a swale being in front of the house.
Paul, Paul, can you kind of, uh, answer that?
On the right, on the, the right side is actually, is a, there's a swale that runs down, so that the water from the right side of the lot comes down along the property line, and there's a slow tent, um, gullling in there, sweeps around to the front of the house. And then there's two little small detention areas, which pick up water and carry it over to the detention pond on the left-hand side of the lot. So there is a, there is a swale, if you look at the grading on the, uh, approved, uh, site plan.
Yeah, but that approved, that approved site plan, and I'm looking at it right now, although I, I tell you right now, the print's too small to tell you what the date is on it, it shows that walkway going right out to the street, period, and that's the one we approved.
Right, th- that walkway right now is ripped up because they ran the pipe across, after they had everything built, then they had to run those pipes in, and so they ripped up the sidewalk to get it to the lines that are the down, that pick up the downspouts that carry across the driveway to that area. So they have to fix the walkway on the lot on the right, do some stonage around the little pond that's on the right, catchy area, and rake out the grading on the lot. See, then seed it and put any new plants in that have to be repaired or replaced that have died or the ones that haven't been installed yet.
So, so, well, really, the sidewalk's always been there, it's just the elevation, basically, and the drainage system that wasn't installed correctly.
There's some grading, it's carried further to the left of the pond, if you look at the grading, it goes down in almost like a three-to-one slope, the grading on the pond is pushed out a little further into the area, but under the drainage analysis, I believe the system still works, it still holds the amount of water it should hold for a hundred-year event.
Yeah, but their, their comment is on this, on this, on the walkway coming out of the building.
This is on the stairs coming out of the deck, Jim?
Yeah, uh, there's a set of stairs on the, there's a deck on the right, the stairs are supposed to come out the back of the deck, heading towards the rear of the house, instead, they come off on the side.
Ah, okay, oh, yeah, I see that, I see that now, yes, yes.
See, that's what their concern was, is that you're gonna step off that, and it's not a flat area, you're almost starting to go into the, like, a depression.
Yeah, and, you know, I, I wanna raise all, you know, I wanna, I wanna disclose every concern with the planning board, because it's important that both boards are in sync at, you know, to get this resolved, so their concern was that those stairs kinda go right into the swale, so their comment is, after someone lives there for two years, they're gonna fill in the swale.
Absolutely true.
Huh?
Absolutely true.
Well, that's it, yeah.
What's their, so, what's the solution?
Well, the solution might be to move the stairs, DJ, any?
The way they're supposed to be?
Do you and Gil talk about that?
Uh, yes, we did, actually, uh, so there is a possibility to move the stairs. If, um, you know, I, I believe when we actually go take a walk there, uh, you know, um, we can definitely, there, there's a lot of room where we could move actually to the right.
I think if you put the stairs where the plan shows the stairs.
Okay.
Because it's gonna be an issue when we go back to the planning board in three weeks, and the, and then it's gonna be an issue here, so let's just build it, build that according to plan, okay?
Yeah, and, and that stairway, I mean, the way it shows on the landscape, on the landscape plan, on the civil plan, it came straight out, and then you took a right-hand turn onto a walkway, meanwhile, between the driveway and, and the walkway was the swale, so if they come off the end of that, um, porch, as a stairway and go over towards the garage, which is where the other sidewalk went anyway, is, that, that actually makes sense on what the planning board's asking for.
Okay, I mean, that's, that's what we have for you.
So we'll, we'll see you in three weeks. Gil, could you please put this on the agenda again?
Sure.
Thank you.
Brian, will you let us know when the stairs have been moved and the planting's been done?
Yes. Yeah.
Because I don't wanna delay it again, and if we haven't seen it, we won't say yes.
Yes.
Okay. Any other matters that would involve, um, Brian, Paul, or other members here? I know we've got a couple of board things we gotta
No.
review, but we're good?
All good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Brian, appreciate everything, have a nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You too.
Thank you. You're right.
All right, so any other matters or clerks' reports?
Um, something that was, and we don't have to talk about this tonight, cuz it's late, but, um, when we were talking about Crescent Street, and they said that Water Street wasn't included in the traffic study, that kinda brings up a little bit of a concern about other traffic studies that we've had. Did I understand, Brian, correctly, that, that whatever the developer puts for, to be studied, that's what's getting studied by T A C?
Ryan's gone.
Other way, other way, other way.
Yeah, T A C is telling them?
Our consultant, V H P.
Oh, okay, all right, then I.
Tell them, we need you to, we think you ought to study these areas, these intersections, whatever.
Okay.
And they go study.
Thinking, I'm like, that really raises a lot of concerns about traffic, if it's the developer telling T A.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
I might have had it backwards, that the, the applicant and their consultant would study what they believe needs to be studied, and our peer review would review it and say, yes, we agree, or no, you gotta go do these other things, but if it has to come from us, I'll, I'll, that's how I'll reach out and say.
Okay, yeah, cuz we need to make sure that all intersections in the areas are getting studied.
Right.
Okay.
Any other comments or updates?
Uh, along those lines, again, real, real quick, though, cuz it is late, the traffic stuff, Dave, did you, uh, have we resent that letter about a traffic study to the town council, and the reason I ask is, I, it was, I actually watched a little bit of the town council meeting the other night, and a lot of the co- their public comments were about that, and it seemed like there might be miscommunication, they didn't seem to be too, um, in the know about traffic, um, studies, the town council.
Right, so the short answer is yes, I did resend it, um, I sent it to the, the T A C and Steve Mayo. I didn't send it to every town council member.
Yeah, 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 no, the, the right.
They may not, I mean, they, I would hope that the folks that were on the town council a few years ago, and we sent the original letter, are aware that we have made this request. I think we even brought it up in our presentation, when we went before the town council, uh, a year and a half ago, uh, we mentioned it as well. Um, unfortunately, we've never really heard anything back on it, so I did resend it to them. Of course, I sent it to Paul Reviss too at the time, but he's retired, but I C C Aaron on this, um, again, who's sorta has part of the new role there, but, uh, um, I, I, my, my thought was to maybe circle back and say, in light, cuz I heard some of that too. Um, um, you know, what is the plan, right? You know, cuz we really didn't hear anything last time, and
Yeah.
we've resent it, it's been a couple of weeks, I sent it right after the last meeting, so, um, I'll circle back with them and just at least try to get a response that, that they're gonna take a look at that wider picture, right?
Hmm.
Um, so I did that, I was also gonna, uh, say that I, um, did ask the, um, T A C to review ninety-seven, ninety-seven to ninety-nine Water Street, the five unit at the corner of Wakefield Ave. Um, again, perhaps more from a safety than a traffic and parking, cuz that didn't seem to be as much of a concern, but just from a safety sightlines, that whole thing, and that intersection, he said it would take it up, um, Lieutenant Anderson said he'd take it up with the next agenda, I don't know if they've set that agenda, um, so those, I was gonna raise those as other updates for me. Um, the other one I had was, um, I, I may have brought this up last year, but with, um, Ben's appointment as the new building inspector, um, there's also a provision in our bylaw for him to be appointed the zoning administrator. And this was raised last year, but we said, well, give him time to get settled in, um, and, and that's certainly happened by now, but, uh, he's now hearing things that he has to kick up to us, because he does not have the, the duties and powers to hear, like, some findings on single and two-family homes, like the one ninety fifty-eight kinda stuff, that he could adjudicate on his own and make that finding and determination, and give him a building permit, so they have to keep coming to us. So it would help everyone involved and probably lighten our workload as well, if we made him, uh, gave him that appointment. Now, we make a recommendation, a motion and a recommendation, and then, um, the town, we forward that to town council, they actually put the appointment and certify, or however the proper term is, so I've asked town council, just to make it clear, uh, I've asked for his input, just to make sure that we entertain the proper motion, make the proper motion, and, and, um, because it, it does say in the bylaw, if you read it, it says they can be quote-unquote certain powers and responsibilities or duties, and it's somewhat vague, so I wanted to be clear what those are that we would need to grant. Uh, we think we know what they are, but I just wanna make sure the proper motion is, is handled. Once I've got, uh, feedback from him, probably, hopefully, at the next hearing, we can entertain that, and I would then write a letter to town council. So just awareness, that might be a, a other matter for next time. The only thing I have on my list, which we can probably do at the end, because, uh, it, it speaks to the, the reappointments of half our board here, um, and that if we're going to make a recommendation, um, we might wanna do it with the other four members, um, and maybe excuse the four that are being reported, so we can talk about them behind their backs, um, but maybe we do that at the end.
We're recorded. I said, don't forget, we're recorded.
I know, I know, but just, they don't have to stay for that if they don't want to, um, but, uh, we could do approval of minutes of March tenth.
That we approve the March tenth minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor, Chip?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Um, yes.
Greg?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yes.
And I vote yes, unanimous.
And I'm highly disappointed you're asking me to leave, but I will, bye.
Good night.
Night, guys.
All right, so, and nobody has anything else, or if not, then the four up for reappointment, have a good night, thanks.
You guys have a nice chat.
Bye.
Yeah.
Can't wait to talk about you.
Yeah, I know.
I, somehow, I, I don't know that they're gonna go back and look at the recording, just to listen to what we.
That's good.
So, uh, hopefully, everyone's had a chance to review the applications, um, of, of the four incumbents, plus, uh, the two other folks.
I have not seen the two others.
Oh, really?
Sent out a few months, at, at least a month back, I believe, right?
Who sent it?
Yeah, they sent it to us, but I think Gil forwarded it, right?
Yeah, pretty sure I did, yeah, to everybody, but, um, I can find it again tomorrow.
Why, Amy, are you on the fence, Amy?
Yeah, I'm on the fence, I gotta see, I gotta see my.
One second, if I can find it, I'll just bring it up and I'll share, cuz it was a, a PDF, I believe.
Need to get back at, at Chip, basically.
Yeah.
Don't do Chip any favors.
Oh, that's cute.
Yeah. Okay. So I have it open, let me just share. Okay. See my screen?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so there was Greg, you know all about Greg. Um, this was the first, um, new person, Nasos Phillips, I assume I'm pronouncing that somewhat correctly. He's been on the Board of Appeals in North Reading, and got some, you know, good experience, I think he's certainly qualified, um, perhaps. Be on the board.
Do we know?
Pardon?
Is he new, new to town recently, or? Does it say?
Six years lived in.
Okay.
Yeah. But again, you know, resume is pretty extensive. Business-wise, education-wise, and again, he's, he's also served on the Board of Appeals in North Reading. So certainly, you know, seems qualified, I, I thought he was a good candidate, as well as the next one. Eddie Shellcross, been awake for a long time, retired, but has done city and regional planning, and she's also been on our planning board back in the nineties. Here for four. So, she too, again, brings some, some past experience and some skills that could, could serve the board well. And then there's the four other, right, so there's Greg, Mike. Getting there, yep, Tom. And Chip. So, so in, in my opinion, if you don't mind me going first, as I said, these, these four, the folks certainly seem qualified and could serve the board, you know, in their capacity, you know, in a future opening exists. But I'm, I'm feeling that, given what's going on in town and all the, all the development with the zoning changes that went into effect, and all those, all the stuff that's going on so far, and what we anticipate are more developments of that nature, that I think the perspective and the experience of the four incumbents, I think it's important that they be reappointed and continue their, their terms and, and hear these newer projects over the next few years that are likely to take. And again, using that experience and perspective of what's gone on, I think will serve them well in that capacity. It's not to say other folks couldn't understand or, or offer valid input and contribution, but I just think it's an important time right now, as I think we would all agree, and, and the four incumbents, I think, are worthy to, and have earned that, that reappointment to continue carrying all these important projects. So that's just my take. If you want to add anything to that, or my, my goal out of this is if there was consensus here, that we would pen a letter from the four of us to the town council stating our recommendations, and we can, you know, I could send a draft around, we have to send it by Friday, but I could send a draft around if we want to get the words right, and anyone wants to offer their thoughts, but but I just want to see if we're, we've got a consensus here, and if anyone wants any other thoughts.
I would agree with you, and I don't need to see it. I trust you, I trust your ability here, better than mine, anyway.
Thanks, Jim.
Yeah, and I agree with you as well. They each bring something to the board, and again, not saying that the others couldn't as well, but they each bring something to the board, and I feel like we kind of everybody has their, given their background and their expertise, we all bring something special to the board, and I think it's a really good dynamic that we have. And I think losing any of them, I think especially at this point, would be detrimental to the board.
Yeah, I agree with you guys. Obviously, I'm the new guy here, so, you know, not new anymore, but two years in, so I only know what I know, so still learning, but I like, I like the four guys, so I like to keep it the way it is.
Well, and again, in, in Greg and Mike's case, again, both attorneys, and I, and when I started, I thought it was a normal thing, because I think at, at the time, Jim, there might have been three attorneys on the board.
Yeah.
And having that perspective, sometimes, you know, the, the ability to kind of see through some of the arguments that are made, and understanding certain aspects from a legal standpoint or zoning standpoint, so I think it's important to have that component, and it's just so happens the two of them are up for reappointment, but I would, again, as you said, we all bring something, and some of their experience and, and legal background, I think, is important to have, so.
I agree.
So that's a part of it from, from their standpoint, obviously, Tom, and it's his best experience in, in Cambridge and Harvard and all that, and Chip, of course. So it's just, you know, the other members certainly could be valuable members at some future time, if in opening somebody steps down or something, and they want to, you know, keep their name in the hat, they, they very well could be a valuable contributor in the future. But, but so I'm inclined to recommend that we ask that the town council reappoint. I, I would also plan to go to the meeting, I think Sherri said, they plan to do it the April fifteenth hearing.
I think so.
We'll double-check and make sure, so we know when it's happening, if folks want to, you know, be on the Zoom, I don't think we'll be back in in-person meetings, but they, folks could dial in and be on the Zoom. And if we wanted to, we could even read the letter in the public participation part, so it's there on the record, I assume it would be in their material anyway, but but at least we would be there and show a, a good presence. I would recommend we do that as well when the time comes, okay?
Yeah, sounds good.
Important that we're there, I mean, as we saw, no, it was actually the same, almost the same slate, wasn't it, with Tom and Chip, at least?
At least those two, I don't, and that's when I think when Joe got added, that was a couple of years ago, or maybe Greg. Greg, yeah, so, yeah, it was something that Exactly, exactly.
If we weren't there, things I think could have gone a, a different way. So I think it's, I think it's actually vital that at least a handful of us are there.
Yep. Yeah, you just never know, like, how the votes may go, but at least I think our letter of recommendation and our presence at the meeting, hopefully will go a long way towards, towards helping that happen, so, okay. Well, thank you for that. I will, again, I will send around the letter real quick, if you just want to give it a quick read. Just let me know if it's good, or if you want to add anything, you know, tomorrow, then I'll send it, you know, by the end of the day, or, you know, first thing Friday, Sherri just said, by Friday, so. We should be good, okay?
So I don't know whether you've heard, Dave, but Brian told me that the head of the lake has been filed.
I did hear that. I did. Today.
Today.
End of April, right, April twenty-eighth, yeah.
Yep.
So that's, that boat is coming up the river.
Well, I'm glad, after all the stuff that's gone on with other groups and everything, that we finally get a bite at the apple, I, you know, I welcome it being opened in a public hearing before us, because it's been a lot going on, a lot of people have said different things, but you know, when people have raised it to me, I said, they haven't even applied to us yet, so let's see what they come forward with, and let's.
According to Brian, they've reached some sort of understanding with the friends of Quanta Power, I guess, as to heights and stuff like that. We'll see.
That's fine, but of course, we're the ones that have to grant the special permit at the end of the day. Okay, well, till the April twenty-eighth, looking forward to that.
That day.
No, 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 no. All right, with that, Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn anytime.
Make a recommendation, we adjourn.
I think it was moved, can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor, Amy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Joe?
Yep.
I vote yes, all right, thank you again for staying a few extra minutes on this and everything tonight, it was a long night, but thank you, and Gail, you too, as always.